Good evening. This is the August 2nd, 2018 meeting of the Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. We're meeting in Town Council chambers. It is now 7:03 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, into the world for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the commission please introduce themselves, starting on my right?
Brian Condon, alternate.
Kenneth Wilk, alternate.
John L. Formicella, alternate.
William Ambrosi, Commissioner.
William Porter, Chairman.
Michael O'Reilly, Vice Chairman.
Will Agresta, Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Scott Schatz, I am the Jusco Director and Tomlin Jr.
Okay, who are we seating tonight, Will?
Okay, so we're gonna seat two people, aren't we?
Yes.
So it's Ken and Ryan. Ken and Ryan.
Okay, item number three, organizational administrative matters. 714 Main Street litigation to consider an act in accordance with the Connecticut Practice Book 14-7B-J on a proposed settlement agreement between the Town of Monroe Planning and 742 Nursery LLC concerning the resolution of a land use appeal captioned 742 Nursery LLC versus the Town of Monroe, docket number HHD-CV17-6078144S pending in the Superior Court in the Judicial District of Hartford. Okay, Commissioners, you have in front of you a settlement agreement related to the land use appeal filed by 742 Nursery LLC. This is an issue that we had previously discussed with the town attorney in an executive session, and this agreement before you is consistent with the agreement we reviewed. According to the terms of the agreement, the property owner will continue to be permitted to conduct agricultural activities on the property as a pre-existing non-conforming use. The town will issue the property owner a building permit to rebuild an existing garage, and the subject parcel will continue to remain zoned as B1. This will bring this litigation to a conclusion, and under the circumstances and facts as presented in this matter, I believe that this settlement is in the best interest of the town. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the settlement agreement as presented.
I move to approve the settlement agreement between the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning and 742 Nursery LLC. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All right, call the roll, starting with Mr. Wilk.
Um, Wilk, aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Mr. Condon.
Condon, aye.
Wilk, aye.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Okay. Item number four, general public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the commission on an issue that's not related to a public hearing? Seeing none. Item number five, general appointments, we have none. Public hearings. Item number six, SUB 2018-01, file number 1263C, 96 and 112 Barnhill Road, Residential and Farming District 1, resubdivision application proposing two single-family residential lots, no associated road or site improvements are involved. Eileen and Dana Mackandow and Lisa Payne, the owners applicants, and this is reconvening from June 21st. Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Um, we just saw exhibits start with exhibit 13, which is Health Department ART comments. Exhibit 14, time extension from the applicant. And exhibit 15, Inland Wilderness Commission subdivision important recommendation. That is all.
Okay. For the applicant.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is John Nuff. I'm returning with an office at 147 Broad Street in Milford. I'm filling in tonight for my partner, Amy Sutgens, who's at another hearing in New London. I understand that the commission is well aware of what happened in this case, that property was sold, that everyone thought was a legal lot, it was not. The ZBA has granted two variances. This hearing was held open from June, so that can be referred to the Inland Wilderness Commission. It has, they had no comment because obviously there's no regulated activity, and so I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we would ask you to close the hearing and approve our application today.
Thank you. Ryan, any questions?
No questions.
Ken?
No questions.
Leon?
Hello. Close the hearing.
I don't either, but since new information had been presented, I have to see if there's anyone in the public who would like to comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Does anyone have any general questions or comments? Back to you, sir.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, thank you. What does the commission feel? Open or closed?
Closed.
Closed, all right, the hearing's closed. Thank you. Next up, SEP 2018-02, file number 1597A, 160 Shelton Road, Residential and Farming District 1. Special exception permit application for change of use from existing office to proposed church affecting approximately half or approximately 3,600 square feet of an existing building. CBL Incorporated, James Vargas, President, Property Owner, San Juan Baptist Church, care of Santos Montanez applicant, and this hearing is reconvened from 7/19. Will, what do we have now?
7/19 date doesn't make sense.
Pardon me?
That 7/19 date doesn't make sense. Is that correct, Dave? I only say that because the things that I have logged in the exhibit book go up to the 18th. Anyway, I'll read them anyway. Exhibit 21, ART comments architectural reboard. Exhibit 22, plan set. Exhibit 23, updated town engineer, ART comments. And exhibit 24, time extension from the applicant. We also received something electronically today, which hasn't been entered in here in print or access, paper copies. Is that new material or just same stuff?
Uh, it's the material that covers the Health Department.
All right, do you have a paper copy?
Yes.
And I'll enter it in as exhibit 25.
Dave, the only thing that changed on this, the location of the septic system?
The look, septic system is the same. The water line is indicated in the test hole results that we did with the Health Department is the only change that's-
Nothing else has changed on the part?
No.
All right, sorry.
My name's David Bjorklund. I'm president of the firm, Spaff Bjorklund Associates. We have offices here in Monroe. When we ended the hearing the last time, I believe there were three issues that were left to be covered. Requested by the commission. One was the Health Department request, and that was to dig another test hole to verify that there was room to expand the system if the existing system ever failed. That was done, and it's satisfactory. The other one was to open up the existing system and to make sure that it was still in operational order. That was done, and the system has never really even been loaded to even an eighth of the capacity of the system. And the last one was the water line. The water line continues to be a little bit of a mystery, fall before you dig, could not locate it. That's probably because the building is basically empty. In order for them to, if it's not a copper line, they've gotta have water running, and the building essentially is empty. I'm sure it was empty when they were there. The apartment is empty during the day, so they couldn't locate it. So we talked with the plumber who had dug up the line when it froze, and the asphalt patches are still there, and he said that it was at the east side of the patches. Well, that almost gets us there, but it doesn't quite get us there. There's still a question in my mind and in the Health Department's mind as to if it really is 10 feet off of the system. So on those plans, thank you, on those plans, we have a note, and what we're going to do prior to the issuance of a permit is actually dig up the system and dig up the water line and make sure that that 10 feet is there. It's really the only way it can be done. We tried to find it when we were out there, but it wasn't apparent at that point in time, so we're just gonna have to do a lot more excavation to find it. We did get an email. Went to William Agresta today from the Health Department. The existing septic system was inspected and is in good working order. We conducted a test work on the property as well. The site has room to expand the septic in the future and meet the public health code. So I think that addresses the Health Department concerns that we had at the last meeting. The other, one of the other requests was for photometric mapping of the proposed lighting. We called the manufacturer. The manufacturer said we do not supply that type of information. That's the, most manufacturers are more than happy to provide that information. It could be that, this is more of a residential fixture than it is of a commercial fixture, and the commission recalls when we were doing the Burr Corner application, we could not find a residential fixture that was night sky compliant. We finally found one. What I would have, what I would offer on this point is, the existing lighting fixtures are all in the front of the property, they're all between the driveway and the state highway. And the, there was none, none of this lighting is in the rear of the property where there is a residence. We'd even be willing to limit, you know, the only nighttime use that the church is going to be using the facility is on Wednesdays, and that's really the only time that we're gonna need the lighting. And we'd be willing to turn, make sure the lighting is turned off at nine o'clock. This really, it's a residential fixture, and it's placed, if you look at the lighting that's there, it's residential, and it's on residential poles, and it's of residential scale.
Are you putting new fixtures in the locations of existing fixtures?
Yes.
You're not adding fixtures?
No. The last item was Commissioner Leacy brought up, the fire marshals. He was concerned with the computations as to the occupancy of the sanctuary. We talked to Bill Daven, and Bill indicated that as he read across the line in the chart, he needs to put a rule around it next time, and he said that in his opinion, the occupancy limit is 85 persons. And not, I think Commissioner Leacy was slightly over 100. But this, and this was also put in an email to planning, that was forwarded to me, and then I forwarded it to Planning and Zoning, so it's the opinion of the fire marshal. The occupancy is 85 people. I still think that's easily within the realm of what the parking that is, exists on the site. And the current church membership is well below that number. Other things, Scott-
Did you reevaluate the parking from that?
Pardon?
Did you redo the parking count?
No, the parking count stays the same.
No, I know, but we have to reconcile that 85 seats, the office.
Okay, when we revise the plans, we can-
And the apartment. But we have enough spaces, right?
Yes. Yeah, we had 100 before.
Well, you didn't have enough spaces when you had 100.
I thought we had, the occupancy at 100.
Yeah, but it was short. I think you're good with these.
Well, what we, what we claimed was that the, the uses were gonna be different.
Why don't you continue, I'll do it, I'll look at it.
Yeah, the-
14 for the office, two for the apartment, and it's one for every five seats. It's 17 that we need for the church. We need 34.
That's 16, right?
And you have, your proposal is 34.
Okay.
And as I indicated, the office use and the church use, even if the office does get, if that intensity increases, currently there's occasionally two people in the office for half a day on any given week, so this isn't gonna-
Could be leased tomorrow.
I know. Even if the intensity changes, that it's, they're not going to be open on Sunday.
You have 34 spaces?
Yes. The only other thing that I'll mention is that, Scott, you weren't at the last meeting, but on the plan, we did detail the MS4 computations for the reduction in the asphalt. That's the, I believe those were the outstanding items.
Still no sign?
No.
No sign lighting?
No.
Any questions from the commission? Down to you, the-
On the water line.
Well, because the code requires it to be 10 feet away from the septic. Well, we do because we're approving the reserve area. It's more of a Health Department issue, but it all comes under our permit.
Where's the reserve?
Right on the other side of the water line.
And just to clarify, this could be too close to the system also. That's the, it's too close, in my opinion, to call, Rich and I met in the field, we looked at it, and we said, you know what? The answer to this is before a permit's issued, dig another test hole or two, find the water line, find the actual system, and make sure that 10 feet is there.
What is he proposing for a resolution if it is?
Move the water line.
Move it, case it?
Oh, that's not permitted under the, no, that doesn't, that's, no, it's gotta be 10 feet from the system. There's no-
So if it has to be moved, you'll just, you'll adjust the reserve area accordingly?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
All right, the fixture that you detailed is the fixture that, even though it doesn't specify it's dark sky compliant, it is a, there is a shroud on the top of the fixture, and it's more or less a downlight.
I believe the original specs that we submitted indicated that when a particular bulb is installed, I don't have it on this spec-
It's right here.
That it's, that it's dark sky compliant.
Yeah, you need a bulb that doesn't come down off the housing. Is it not an LED?
It's been, I looked at this a month ago, but there was a specific bulb, if installed, it was dark sky compliant.
Yeah, to do the LED module, it probably would be dark sky.
Yeah, it was a 40-watt bulb.
So it would be on the corner.
When we submit the final package, I'll make sure that's detailed.
It says dark sky, yes.
What's that?
It says dark sky, yes, on it.
Yeah, and it looks like you can put either a incandescent or an LED thing in it.
Go down, qualifications there.
Okay.
Come on, I can't show dark sky, yes.
Okay, good.
Right, okay. But it is with a particular bulb, so we'll detail that bulb.
All right, staff, have any other questions? No.
Bond recommendation is 2,500. It's the minimum.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
Anything else?
No.
Let's see if, let's see if anyone has any comments. Anyone in the public want to speak in favor of this application? Anyone want to speak in opposition to this application? Any general questions or comments? Back to you, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Commission, what do you think? Open or closed?
Close.
Close.
All right, hearing's closed. Next up is item number eight, SEP 2018-03, file number 1598A, 205 Monroe Turnpike. This hearing has been adjourned to 8/16, to request of the applicant. Item number nine, SEP 2018-05, file number 1600A, 27 Main Street. This hearing has been postponed with the request of the applicant to August 16th. Item number 10. Is it here?
I'll go look outside, because there are also item-
There are 10 and there are 14.
There are also 14.
Come on, we're gonna keep on calling.
We're gonna get everything else we can.
She's unfinished the reading, we're trying to call her.
All right, let's go.
I thought the agenda was a little longer, so.
All right, we're gonna skip item number 10 for a few minutes. All right, moving on to site plan review. Item number 11, STP 2018-02 has been postponed to September 6th at the request of the applicant. Item number 12, time extensions. SEP 2016-11, file number 1581A, 269 Purdy Hill Road, Burr Corner, age restricted. We received a letter from Danziger Homes. Dear Will, it appears that we will need an additional 90-day extension to the modifications and requirements of approval, which is currently set to expire August 2nd, 2018. Can you please put us on the agenda for another extension? Please let me know if there are any problems, very true of yours, Ken Danziger. So we have a request for a 90-day extension. Do we hear a motion?
Move to approve SEP 2016-11, file 1581A, for a 90-day extension.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Cook, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Bond releases, we have none. Permit amendment modifications, we have no applicant. Meeting minutes for July 19th, 2018. All right, present, Porter, O'Reilly, Leacy, Ambrosi, Mayini, Formicella, and Condon. So we'll go with Porter, O'Reilly, Ambrosi, and Condon.
You can keep Ken.
What's that?
You can keep Ken, he'll just abstain.
All right. Ken, you have to abstain. All right, do we have a motion?
Move to accept meeting minutes from July 19th, 2018, of the planning and zoning commission as draft. Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any corrections or comments? All right, hearing done, call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Can I give Mr. Wilk a chance?
Sure, Mr. Wilk, go right ahead.
Wilk abstained.
Porter, yes. Ken, you can't, you can't lag on these things, they're just gonna get left behind.
I started to, we jumped in front of you.
All right, item number 16, pending application deliberations, determinations. First up, we have SEP 2018-06, file number 1601A, 25 Cutler's Farm Road, Wolf Park. You remember, this was for a small storage structure to be built out in the back. No water, no power. It's not within the wetland setback, it, it's just there, and it doesn't create any increased demand for parking, no other changes to the site. No call for a motion.
This is just three of you.
Yeah, Porter, O'Reilly, Ambrosi.
Move to-
So this is deliberation.
To grant a special exception for a moment.
SEP 2018-06, file number 1601A, as draft, second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Call the roll, starting with Leon.
Ambrosi, yes.
Porter, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
I don't yell, Leon. Let's talk about-
We're gonna get to that. We're gonna get to that next.
Let's do it.
No, first, let's see if we have, we have the subdivision request, Barnhill Road. I think we discussed this one pretty much in depth. Properties were subdivided, but not 100% legally. Two different properties have been paying individual taxes to the town for the last 20 years. Inland wetlands had no issues.
Well, inland waters did have a referral comment that they wanted you to include on the subdivision form. It was just a comment, and they already agreed in their, at the Wilderness Commission that they would do it, but-
Well, they say any future development will necessitate the investigation and determination of limits of wetlands.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? What's the commission's feeling towards this?
Prove it, those.
So we'll ask Wilk to prepare a draft approval letter on that. Next up, we have SEP 2018-02. SEP 2018-02, 160 Shelton Road. There were a couple of issues with this one that I noted that I wanted the commission to weigh in on. To recall, they had, at some point in the past, removed a bunch of trees from the front of the property that had died. They're requesting to not put in any more trees in the front of the building. I just wanted commissioners to weigh in on how they thought about that request.
It's a beautiful building, and I think you really... He just screened it from the...
Yeah.
They're not intended for...
They're intended for...
What is that?
They're literally street trees, they're like trees...
Deciduous trees.
Just trees to provide vertical relief, to provide microclimate control, to provide overall continuity of the landscape. It's not intended at all to screen.
Yeah, these are not like, you know, evergreens, it's more of a, you know, a flowering type tree, or a pin oak, or, you know, something that is more of a higher foliage tree.
I mean, I still, going by there, it's not, there's a berm.
Yeah, it's a bit of a drop off.
And you want to put the tree on top of that, I don't know if it really needs that.
They do, the plan shows, they do plan on putting a lot of plants, right, a lot of flowers and different...
Or a ground cover, ground cover type landscaping.
I mean, I agree, it's definitely a nice looking building, I drove by it earlier today and took a peek. They're not proposing any big changes to the face of the building.
Ken, what do you think?
I think, like, if they got flowering little bushes or something up there instead of a tree, I'd go with the bushes and the plants, so...
You're good. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Sella.
Good evening.
Glad you could join us.
Summer.
They requested to keep the painted islands in their parking lot for drainage reasons, rather than actually construct islands.
Does that comply with the permeable...
They're still within their... They've reduced their hard surface by the appropriate amount. No one has any comments?
Does that matter, Scott?
As you said, they met their reduction in impermeable, it doesn't matter, I mean, that's what your regulations strive for. And this site's a little tight, it's a little small, so if you put the islands in, it's gonna be a little difficult to plow, that kind of thing. But it provides green and delineation of parking spaces.
What happens is when those spaces are a little oversized, they get parked in and they're not parked right, because they're not there. It kind of messes with the traffic control. It's not the end of the world in a smaller lot with only a few spaces.
There are other sites in town that have those, right?
All across the country.
Yeah, they're common, we're just, the ultimate goal is to get compliance, to, you know, eliminate them eventually.
It's not a good design, but it's, you know, this is not brand new either.
Yeah, it's, they're not proposing any change to the parking lot. Except reducing the impermeable surface. All right, the water line, I think that's, in our approval, if we go for an approval draft, we just have to put something in there that, you know, it's going to be contingent upon the, you know, the water line issue being resolved with the health department.
Yep.
Note the occupancy is 85, based on the fire marshal's calculation. And the parking is calculated based on that occupancy load. Anything else? Anyone?
They're gonna, we're gonna make sure that the sign isn't on the plans. And I did have some housekeeping to the bulk table that I hadn't confirmed, I may have made those changes already, but I'll double check, if not, I'll add.
Okay.
It was the minimum bond, 2,500 yen.
Right. All right, well, if there's nothing else, what is, what's the feeling of the commission?
Yeah, draft approval.
Draft approval.
All right, so we'll put together a draft approval letter on this. Anything else I'm forgetting? As far as deliberations.
No, we did the other one, right, the first time, right? Nope, that's it.
Okay, next up is item number 17, regulations review amendment work session. We passed out at our last meeting a copy of the long-awaited text amendment. That helps to consolidate a lot of the uses into tables and clean up some of our definitions. We've revised our parking standards. Will, why don't you take over?
Okay. You guys at the end, were you on when we first circulated this to the commission? You and John, right?
Yeah.
I don't know if Ken and Ryan...
Ken and Ryan were...
Yes, I know Kathy was with us at the time.
Yeah.
All right, so...
Pat was with us at the time.
So how much do you want to go into this?
Well, everyone should have memorized it by now.
Oh, yeah.
So I'll just give a bigger view.
First, let me start off, this is, this is a discussion amongst the commission members. This has been thoroughly vetted by the, the regulation subcommittee. Now we want any input or comments from the full commission. And then the next step after tonight would be that this would then go to a public hearing.
No, not yet. We won't do it until you guys decide whether to do it.
Give me your what? No, not until the commission approves it. And then we'll put it online, and we'll go to public hearing.
So these are the text amendments that we had a public hearing for once already.
We didn't have a public hearing, we had a public information session.
We had a public hearing scheduled.
Right.
We canceled that and had the public information session. And then we made all those revisions since then with the committee. So the organization is, it only affects the, if you go to the right for the cover page, it only affects certain articles. Obviously, it doesn't affect seven and nine. This is focused on the land uses and the parking standards related to land uses and the definitions related to land uses. And some general standards for the processing of applications. That's what Article One deals with. Article Two, what you're seeing is all the definitions related to land uses specifically. All the other definitions, there are other definitions in the existing code which are not being amended, are not listed in these tables. So these are either being added, eliminated, or amended in regard to a land use definition. So again, there are other definitions in the code that aren't changing. The Articles Three and Four and Five, what we're doing in those is we're taking the land uses that are listed in each individual district out of the individual article, and they're being put into the table in the back. And the table in the back, or, table in the back is 10.1, which is a new article. And in that table, all the uses are listed in the column along the left margin. All the districts in town are across the columns on the top. So in a glance, you can see in what district, throughout all the districts, whether the use is permitted, how it's permitted, very quickly, by looking at the table. In doing that, we also consolidated some uses where there were redundancies. That's why some things are going away, because there's like two, three terms all for the same thing. In other cases, we're adding some aspects to it, adding some uses for the things that we've been, we've been seeing, for instance. In the retail districts, you know, right now, it just says basically retail. But all your karate shops and all those kinds of places aren't, they're being permitted under personal service uses. We're giving them, we're rising it up and giving them a name and giving them a definition, so it's much more clear what those uses are. But it's things that, you know, have changed over time, but the code hasn't caught up to it, so they're catching up to it. The... Article Six is where the parking standards are presently. And what we're doing is we're matching the new schedule, Schedule Point Two. We're matching the list of all the uses that are in the code, that are in the, you know, in this code, and giving it a parking standard. In the existing code, we have a bunch of uses that are permitted with no parking standard. And we have uses listed in the parking standards where there's no use in the use table. So we're making them equally consistent, so all the uses are covered and have a parking standard. And in many instances, we are also reducing the parking standard, because we're overparked. And that's a common thing throughout the country. So we're reducing that. And I take note that we had done that for retail uses a while ago, we had reduced the standard for retail a few years ago. Now we're doing it for some other uses as well. In Article Eight and Six, there are some things that we're moving around to be in the appropriate chapter where they belong. So things are really being moved around. There's a little editing going on to make it clearer and to take out some stuff that's not that relevant. But for the most part, it's really just moving it to a more appropriate location in our code. And then, as I said, Article Ten are the two new schedules. And the other thing that we're trying to do with the parking standards, we're trying to, as best possible, attach them to a fixed unit. Trying to get away from, although we can't always do it, we're trying to get away from things that we can't control, such as people. Now, we can control people when it comes to a capacity rated by fire or building code, because that's a known entity based on the space. So we're trying to do everything, for the most part, in comparison to, the gross floor area comparison to 1,000 square feet. So something for 1,000 square feet. That builds in, the gross floor area, all the things that come with that, you know. So you have a retail store, you have a store in the house, back of the house, you have an office, you have a bathroom. Those are all counted in the gross floor area, the number, the ratio accounts for those things. So it's not thinking the entire thing is, you know, retail store. It's treating the whole thing as a retail store, but it's saying that this space would require this much parking based on its gross floor area. So the calculations already account for the variations that you might come and go, because some store might, in practice, have less of a demand. But that same space with a different store would have a higher demand. So it kind of averages out over those kinds of uses, and that's what our standard is based on. So that's it, and that's all.
So Michael, Leon, and myself are very familiar with this because we're on the subcommittee. So basically, I'm looking to you three to see if you have anything that you picked up on here, that you have questions about or any comments about.
I have one on page two, just the definition of the building. I'm reading it as the building has to have doors and windows, so if it doesn't have windows, it's not considered a building, even if it's just a door.
On page two?
Two.
Yep.
Use definition. It's a structure having a roof supported by enclosed walls on all sides, including doors and windows. Should say including but not limited to doors and windows, or... I don't know how many buildings you have with the windows, but...
So you're saying if it doesn't have a window...
If it's just walls and a door, is that a building?
Right, yeah. Well, the fix could be and/or, but then, where's the door?
Yeah. We're just, yeah, a building with, I mean, it has, it's enclosed, I get that, we're not talking about lean-to's or anything. You got, you got four walls, but I don't know if they require windows.
No, you're not required to have windows. But you're not exclude, they're not excluded either.
Well, I mean, reading this, I read it as it needs to include doors and windows. Including doors and windows makes it a building.
Well, I could also read it because of the comma, that the doors and windows are included in the walls as openings, as opposed to the enclosure.
How about changing and to or?
I can do that, but it's gotta have a door.
Yeah, but you have to have the door, yeah.
We can do and/or and it's fine, because it's not gonna have a door.
And/or, okay.
Okay.
And then, did we have another original definition for place of worship, or is that completely new to the codes? Page nine.
That's a new, anything that's in the blue underline is...
New.
And I also should note that due by Vin Marino, Special Counsel to the, that's one of the things we did follow with him.
Yeah, all right, I just wanted to make sure that it, you know, defining church is kind of more faith-based. It's difficult.
Well, for faith-based, wouldn't that be an issue if someone's religion didn't specify faith at that point? Or it would be a lack of faith?
Well, it says faith-based and/or religious.
Like Will said, this is one, this is one item in particular that was specifically reviewed, and a recommendation was made by our land use attorney in how we should word it.
That's what I wanted to just make sure we used in proper legal definitions.
So that's one that I think we should leave as is, because that's, that's what the lawyers told us to put.
Sounds good, that's the answer I wanted. That's it?
Ken, anything?
Apparently, this took a long time to do.
Two years.
I kind of like the way it's been done now, because some of the definitions were long and drawn out, now they're short and sweet. So that was a good job on that, because I think the book's gonna be a little bit lighter too, with all the strikeouts here. So, but it's a lot easier to understand in life.
Yeah, especially the uses, it's gonna be a lot easier to just go to a use table instead of flipping through three or four chapters in the book.
Yes, absolutely.
Anything?
Only on the building with the possible language adding and/or, I would propose not using and/or, because it does indicate either is acceptable. Additionally, what is the reason for the change in definition from the original definition?
Who's the reason?
This is gonna be a public hearing.
No, I just think he has a reason.
Yes, who's the reason? We needed a better, more concise definition of what a building is. And what it, more specifically, what it is not.
What negative results were coming from our previous definition?
Misinterpretations.
Yeah, a building didn't have walls, so it could have just four pillars supporting a roof.
And you would want to move that use to what?
Not a building.
Right, but what would you want to call it?
It's a structure.
Structure.
As a structure, okay. But yes, I would not use the and/or language.
What would you use? Including but not limited to?
I would take that, including doors and windows. I would take out the including doors and windows.
Closed would then mean that it has to have no doors or windows?
That, well, that's the problem when you put a definition on it, but? So because it says including doors and windows, Ryan had a question if a building had to have windows. So there was a proposal to put and/or to fix that problem.
We didn't want to leave it off because we were worried that someone would say you can't have a door or a window.
Well, how about if we just lose the comma?
That can include?
And put a parentheses that says doors and windows allowed. How's that?
Or that includes doors and windows?
How about with doors and windows as appropriate?
I was at that way.
That works.
Okay, that works. Go with it.
Somebody's in a mood tonight?
I already told them that.
So John, is that acceptable?
That's acceptable.
All right, so it's going to now say walls on all sides, including doors and windows as appropriate. Everyone is happy with that?
I didn't hear anything.
Yes.
Yeah. I was happy with the other.
Well, then, if that's the case, Will, please make that one change based on Jonathan's recommendation. You can put an asterisk there and put John's name under it.
I want an assist. I want an assist, I wrote it down.
Yeah, put them both on.
The team effort. We discussed it for weeks.
So if everyone is in agreement, this document with that one minor modification is going to be the final document that we go to public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing, I forgot. For school.
Put that section, what page?
I don't remember what page it is. Anyways, it says private and public school. But then it lists things like trade school, elementary school, K to twelve, things like that. But it doesn't mention higher education. I didn't see, is there a place for allowing schools for higher education in the town?
I'm trying to remember if we had a discussion about that and everyone thought that was never gonna happen and we weren't gonna put it in. If someone wanted to do it, we'd entertain it. But that's a few, I mean, the thing is, when you get into higher education, they do change a little differently than from these schools, the scale, and what they might want, like housing. But again, we don't have set the capacity for that kind of thing.
Sure, well, it didn't have to be housing, but it could be, I don't know, like a community.
No, it could, I don't disagree with that.
If Usatonic wants to open a branch up in Monroe, or Yukon wants to open a satellite branch, you know, it only takes two years to get an amendment through, so we can, you know, look into it and?
Well, that's why maybe we should add something.
If Yukon does it, they're gonna do it without us, so don't worry about it.
No, I understand your point, but we can't plan for every possible contingency. So if a university or a school higher than grade twelve is interested, we can talk to them and potentially add them to our regulations.
If someone goes to Stevenson, Lumber, that would be good.
Truck kilt, send them a truck kilt, that'll work.
All right, so?
I mean, all right, is there any way of adding for chickens?
No.
No, you can't add like the live.
No.
Okay.
That's a totally separate subject that will be addressed after this.
All right, just wanted to make sure.
I don't know how I can make that.
Just had to ask.
I've only been saying it for the last year. So again, I pose the question, is everyone happy with this document?
Yes.
As it stands with the one minor modification that we just discussed?
Yes.
All right, so Will is going to make that change. Then, Will, I would like this revised, final revised document to get up on the website and get it slated for a public hearing. All right, let's jump back. Going back to public hearings. All right. Planning and zoning commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notes public hearing to be held on August 2nd, 2018. In accordance with Connecticut general statute eight dash seven D, a public hearing will be held in the town hall council chambers, Seven Fan Hill Road, Monroe, Connecticut, on Thursday, August 2nd, 2018, at 7:00 PM, or soon thereafter concerning the following. SEP 2018 dash oh seven zero two A, 485 Pepper Street, Industrial District One. Special exception permit application and change of use, including retention of existing main building and new construction of an approximately 4,064 square foot indoor crushing and screening facility, as well as construction of several connected covered storage bins totaling approximately 20,460 square feet, approximately 1,980 square feet open storage bin, approximately 3,960 square feet of vehicle and equipment storage area, outdoor material pile areas, and associated site access, parking, and utility improvements. Doris R. Urban, Robert A. Cummings, Nora P. Davis, Glenn N. Davis, and Deborah T. Andrasko, property owners, Monroe Recycling and Aggregates applicant. Complete details and copies of all related materials associated with above matters are on file and available for viewing in the Monroe Planning and Zoning Department offices. All right, Will, what do we have for exhibits?
Exhibit one, special exception permit application submission and attachments. Exhibit two, engineering plan set, excuse me, report. Exhibit three, plan set. Exhibit four, ART building comments. Exhibit five, notifications department public health. Exhibit six, notification for growing water company. Exhibit seven, ART comments engineer. Exhibit eight, ART comments conservation commission. Exhibit nine, ART comments planning. Exhibit 10, in the law commission notice to take a decision. And exhibit 11, architectural review board comments. You guys have certifications? Thank you.
Okay, and for the applicant?
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering. Offices located here in Monroe, five Main Street. First, I just wanted to apologize, the expediency in which you guys processed the first half of the agenda. I apologize that I wasn't here when our initial time came up, but thank you for moving on and still having us present tonight.
It's because we're business friendly.
I would agree. So I'm here this evening to talk about the proposed special exception permit application for 485 Pepper Street. The application was made on behalf of Monroe Recycling and Aggregates. The project, just to orient everyone, the project's located at 485 Pepper Street. So here's an area of the town of Monroe. Route 25 runs north-south along the western edge of town. 45 Pepper Street's along like the northern edge of Pepper Street here. Pepper Street's a loop, the northern intersection of Pepper Street with Main Street is approximately this location. So just to orient everyone, so here's Route 25. Here's where Pepper Street intersects with Main Street. You can see the Pepper Street Business Park, which is in the north of Pepper Street here. 45 Pepper Street is just east of, or somewhat across the street from Really Good Stuff. There's some other commercial buildings or industrial buildings. The site is approximately five point, five point nine acres. The site is currently improved with a legally non-conforming residential use in the property. It's been used for a number of different kind of rough, some residential uses. I think they've probably done some other storage and materials, construction type activities, things like that. But it's primarily undeveloped and underutilized, underutilized piece of property. There is a large wetland corridor which traverses the rear portion of the property in this location here and a very small wetland pocket to the north. The project has gone through and received in the Wetlands Commission approval, which would be in your documents. We're proposing a recycling and aggregate center. We actually came before this commission for discussion on an interpretation of zoning regs. We also recently received an approval for a temporary change of use for this project, for this property, which was actually dependent upon and subject to expiration because we were bringing in this formal application right behind it. So thankfully, we're here for this formal application. So the project proposes to maintain the existing residential house, convert that to an office space for office operations of the property. We're proposing to construct a 4,064 square foot manufacturing facility, which I'm gonna get into a little bit more detail on regarding those operations, and 20,000 square foot of storage warehouse spaces. Now, the site itself and the operations is, really contains, I think, multiple principal uses. Now, this happens on most applications, if you have a restaurant and retail and that type of development, those are multiple principal uses. For this particular application, we are proposing more than one principal uses, and I'm gonna talk about that a little bit because there has been some discussion about what the principal use is and then how to calculate outdoor storage associated with that. We feel we've actually, let me go through it. So there's a couple of principal permitted uses allowed in all of the industrial districts, one of which is item D, commercial bulk storage completely contained within a building and warehousing, storage, and wholesale distribution of raw materials, work in process, finished products, building materials, and supplies, subject to the following provisions. They must be stored within a building or structure. Only 20% of the building area is permitted outside. It has to be covered and screened from the street. And then, it's obviously in no case gonna be construed to be done for, to rent it or to sell it to other people. Additionally, there's also special exception uses in the, which is allowed in all the industrial districts, but more specifically, the special exception use allowed in the I-1 district, which is, excuse me. Oh, excuse me, special exception use in all industrial districts is the manufacturing. I was right, it was, it didn't make it in the slide. But also the manufacturing of materials from previously prepared.
I am C, Ken.
Excuse me?
I do C.
Manufacturing, compounding, assembly, and treatment of articles made principally from previously prepared materials. So from an operation standpoint, what we're proposing is that this is a facility which is going to bring in construction aggregates or material that's been previously prepared and possibly reclaimed from construction projects. So that material will come into the property, it will go over a scale house, it will be dumped into a what's considered a surge pile, and then it will go through a processing operation within this manufacturing building where we will be basically manufacturing construction aggregate from either, from rocks or possible bringing in asphalt chunks and millings, things like that, that will go through a crushing operation or manufacturing operation, which will go through a primary jaw crusher into a secondary cone crusher. The primary jaw crusher takes larger materials, crushes it down to essentially five inch minus material or two inch minus material that goes into a primary cone crusher, which further reduces the size of any aggregates or material that's put into that machine. Then it will go into a screener, which will be a proposed, I believe, two-deck screener, which will create a myriad of different products based on the screen decks provided in that equipment. Now, we're proposing this operation to be done entirely within the side of the building. However, the materials that are prepared will also then be stored, from a warehouse standpoint, in the enclosed or in the buildings and the structures proposed in this location here. And the total area for that area is just over 20,460 square feet contained within five storage buildings which face to the rear of the property, and then two small storage buildings which face towards Pepper Street itself. In addition to all of this covered warehousing inside of those structures, there is a small open bin in this location here, which would have some construction materials. And then we have a vehicle parking area proposed on a concrete pad in this location here. The entire site is proposed to be paved with asphalt paving in accordance with the town of Monroe regulations. The total, the site provides a total of 44 parking spaces, primarily provided in front of the office building here with some additional spaces here and a large number of spaces towards the rear of the property here. From an operation standpoint, this facility will likely only have, you know, one to three employees. There'll be someone inside the office, which is essentially gonna act as like a scale house so that as vehicles come in with materials, they'll be weighed, they'll get a ticket, they'll then dump the material, and then they may either get some other previously prepared materials or some material loaded back over the scale and then to exit the facility. So there'll be an operator kind of managing the operation of this. As material comes into the site, comes over the scale house, it'll be dumped into a surge pile here. That surge pile is something that constantly moves based on as material comes in, and it's something that's constantly managed along with all the materials that are generated as part of this project. So as you can see here, in some of the comments from staff, you know, we have a surge pile, which is larger because that'll essentially accumulate material. But as material is processed through the manufacturing facility, manufacturing operation, it's gonna create small piles of material, which are going to be either a small fine material, which kind of comes off the primary crusher, or these finished product materials. And these smaller piles, as you may have noticed, they seem very small in size. And one of the considerations of this project and this process is a lot of those piles are constantly maintained and managed. As soon as material comes off of these belts, there's gonna be loader operations that are constantly taking this material, putting them into bins. So this area here, while it's, you know, smaller in size than obviously the material that comes in, that's just because this whole process is a continually ongoing process. It's constantly picked up, it's constantly managed, it's constantly put into those bins for that warehousing and storage. So this really is a very active operation in that it has to get managed and as, in order for the operations to effectively work. As you can see, you know, there's very limited room through here, so trying to provide a larger area for some of this stuff and let it accumulate really doesn't allow for the operations or lend itself for the facility to actually operate because then it restricts your ability to kind of get past these piles, to manage these things. And some of the, some of the comments from staff, which we'll get into, you know, talks about trying to physically delineate those piles and create kind of structures or things like that to manage those materials. But because this process is such a fluid process that's constantly changing as this material is processed, we can certainly look at possibly maybe adding some bins to kind of define some of these areas better. However, we just feel that's actually going to be an impediment to the operation of the facility as this material is constantly moved, it's constantly cleaned out, it's constantly managed as part of that process. So that, so again, that kind of showed just how that process actually happens. The, our site drive has been located towards the north of the property, almost at the north, the most northerly location for the driveway. This was strategically designed because of site distances at the property. We've located this essentially as close to the crest of the vertical curve as we can in both the existing conditions, but also the proposed conditions pending the construction of the Pepper Street reconstruction project. So the current driveway exists in this location here. There's very limited site distance coming out of here primarily because of very thick vegetation north and south of the driveway. Part of this project, the Pepper Street project, is obviously lowering this about four to five feet. And so actually, one of the things that we've observed, and we've gone through this extensively with Scott, and we're gonna continue to provide a formal response to comments after discussion with the commission. But we have located this driveway to really provide the most optimal location to maximize the available site distance that can, that this property can really accommodate based on both existing conditions and proposed conditions. And we have had conversations with Scott. We met with Scott actually again this morning, and we feel we can, well, again, we've designed it to provide the maximum of site distance that this property can actually accommodate. From a gradient drainage standpoint, the site has been designed in accordance with 2004 water quality manual that's provided by DEEP and the MS four requirements for the town of Monroe. When we looked at our overall design, we wanted to make sure that we were mimicking and matching the same drainage patterns which currently exist on the property. There's a very, there's a low-lying area here, right in the corner of the property where there is some drainage contributing to it. So we've actually designed two systems. One system collects stormwater, treats it through a? One system collects stormwater, treats it through a hydrodynamic separator prior to discharge into an underground detention system, and then that outlets, uh, in this location here to match the same, um, rate of runoff that feeds this area under existing conditions. The balance of the site is collected through a series of catch basins with, with two-foot sumps, um, runs through a series of catch basins, um, the roof drainage from the proposed storage, uh, buildings are collected, routed through us, through another, uh, hydrodynamic separator to achieve our water quality requirements and discharge into another underground detention system in this location here, which will attenuate, um, the increase in runoff associated with the change from the current conditions to the proposed conditions, and that's discharged to the northerly end of this wetland towards the rear of the property through a level spreader. So, we've actually been able to maintain those same drainage patterns. Again, our, our project has, uh, been reviewed and approved favorably by the Wetlands Commission, so we've been able to match those, those same peak flows and those drainage patterns that currently exist. There were some minor, you know, there's some minor comments from Scott that we've kind of received as part of this process and we're working through, through those with, and we can, we feel we can actively address all of this from a technical standpoint regarding the drainage design. Uh, addition, additionally, as part of our stormwater management, we've actually incorporated an additional water quality measure that you don't usually see on most of the projects, but that is because of our, our proposed operation and the fact that we are going to have, uh, material running through, um, the, the crushing and screening operations, basically, um, stockpiling on the pavement. What we've done is we've actually designed any catch basin within close proximity to any of these piles of that, of that material that's there temporarily. We've actually designed and we're going to incorporate a, a, a series of, uh, essentially catch basin inserts, which will act as like a permanent silt sack, so that any runoff that, that may, um, come, you know, any, if there's, if there's any of those products actually on the ground, exposed to the rain, if any of that, um, any of that finer material or anything gets into the, the catch basin, there's actually another line of defense to actually catch and collect any, any sediment, uh, within that water. So, those will actually, um, be actively managed and just, and the material collected and disposed of in accordance with, um, uh, you know, applicable requirements, so that that's an added, uh, water quality measure incorporated into the project. Um, and that is something that we, that we reviewed and the Wetlands Commission was very, uh, favorable of, and, and they include it as a condition of their approval. Our soil erosion sediment control plan has been designed in accordance with the 2002 Soil Erosion Sediment Control Manual, as provided by DEEP. We did design it in two phases. The first phase, um, basically for the overall site clearing, um, as they start the, to do the primary site construction, and then the secondary plan as the project is under construction. We've been able to reduce the limits of disturbances as, to the maximum extent practical. Our SEC measures include a series of, um, uh, silt fence with hay bales backing around the perimeter of the property. Again, we have, um, silt sacks and catch basins, and again, we have those permanent measures as well. From a utility standpoint, um, uh, we are proposing to upgrade the existing electrical facility on the property. Um, where did I go? Sorry about that. Um, so we are proposing a new underground service from an existing pole in this location here. The current site is not, uh, currently connected to public water, so we are proposing a connection to the proposed, to the existing, to the water main within Pepper Street. Um, the existing septic system will be replaced as part of this project, and we actually have located that while it is a portion, while it is within the, um, front landscape buffer. Um, your regulations do allow for that, and we actually located that septic system to be immediately adjacent to the driveway in an area that isn't necessarily landscaped because just from normal, um, from a buffer standpoint, we wanted to make sure we provided an adequate buffer, but we located this in an area where you want to maintain snow shelf and things like that anyway, so that's actually located in an area where, um, you wouldn't typically see within a robust landscape area, so it's not actually going to, um, impede the ability to put landscaping in that area, um, from what you'd normally see on any normal application. So, we are proposing to install a new, uh, septic system in this location here. Um, the, uh, we are proposing, so we're proposing new connection services to the existing residence or existing house, which will serve as an office, um, which is being maintained, and then we are propo- proposing service from that building to the manufacturing facility for both electric and water service, uh, to allow for dust suppression within this facility, um, and then to, you know, for other power that's needed, uh, within here. Uh, again, from a landscape standpoint, we have, um, provided a comprehensive landscape plan. Um, not only does it include wetland plantings around the, surrounding the wetland areas, but we do have area along the frontage. Um, the existing house essentially acts as screening for anything towards the rear with these bins, but we have, uh, additional landscaping up to the, uh, north of the driveway, you know, some to the south of driveway. These trees have been slightly shifted to reflect the septic system, but we can further work with Will to make sure that, um, uh, there aren't any potential conflicts and he's comfortable with what we're proposing. In addition to our landscaping along the frontage and along the southerly boundary, which will, which will truly serve to provide that full screening and the buffering that's required in the zoning regulations, we're also proposing a, uh, six-foot-high, um, board-on-board screen fence, essentially extending from the edge of the existing house along this frontage, um, to ensure that there will not be any, um, uh, you know, visible operations from Pepper Street, and we feel that what we've designed, uh, really does meet the intent of the, of the regulations. Uh, from a lighting standpoint, we've designed the, the lighting plan in accordance with the, the zoning regulations. We have a light pole to service this area of the parking area. Um, we have some building-mounted lights, some which exist, some which are proposed. We tried to minimize the overall, um, light that we're providing on the property just to make sure that we didn't have any light spillage. All the light lighting is designed in accordance with dark sky, you know, uh, dark sky requirements, recessed fixtures, no visible light source, uh, to ensure that, uh, it meets the applicable regulations. Um, from a, a building design standpoint, we are proposing, again, these are, these do meet the definition of buildings under the current regulations. I know the commission is contemplating change to those regulations, but under the current definition, these meet the definitions of buildings and structures. Um, and again, our material is completely, uh, completely contained within those buildings. Um, uh, it's, uh, concrete block walls with a roof system. In addition, we're providing a, um, vinyl membrane along, vinyl, uh, doors along the fronts of these buildings, so these are completely enclosed. One of the discussions that we had when we came before the commission for an informal discussion was, there was concern about building these structures and only having three sides, the sides and the rear and leaving the front open. So, one of the things that we incorporated into this design was actually making sure that we had those, um, vinyl coverings along the entire front of these buildings, so these are enclosed. Um, and we do feel that these meet the, the intent of the zoning regulations, and they certainly comply with the definitions. Um, they are stepped a little bit based on the existing topography that's been shown on the plans. Again, and in your file, there is a, a positive referral from the Architectural Review Board for this project. So, these are the, the, the storage buildings towards the rear of the property. Uh, this is an elevation of the proposed manufacturing facility, um, uh, towards the front of the property. This does have some larger overhead doors, because during the operation, um, as we stated, there will be, um, the discharge of the finished product that comes off of those conveyors, and you can see just a little bit more detail here, the overall operation. So, um, during those operations, a, a loader will come in and out of this door, grab the material from the store, from the surge pile and bring it into this crusher, and it then goes through the, the, uh, the, the manufacturing or crushing operation. And again, we do have some details on these plans. Um, with me here this evening is our, our, our building designer, who can answer any questions the commission may have, but we do have those vinyl coverings in those doors to ensure that we do, uh, meet the, the requirements of the regulations. Uh, the existing home is just going to be maintained. Um, we are proposing some, um, just modifications to bring it up to code from an ADA compliance standpoint. Um, we've provided an ADA ramp to make sure that we meet the ADA requirements, uh, providing a handicap bathroom, um, as necessary to ensure that we meet all the applicable requirements. Um, we've provided just some pictures of that existing house, uh, which we are proposing to be maintained. One of the items that wasn't in the, 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 the plans, but it was commented on by the staff, was a proposed monument sign, a proposed, uh, sign for the property. We are proposing a sign. We, we do have some additional detail here, we can certainly provide additional detail in terms of coloring and, and materials and such, and, and things like that, but we are proposing for it to be a concrete base with, um, uh, you know, a, um, uh, a, a fieldstone type wall, um, to be with, you know, to be filled with angular rocks, um, fieldstone color range to kind of, again, lend itself to what the operation is. The operation is a...
Yeah, that's not a fieldstone wall. It, it says it's a gavian.
A fieldstone color, excuse me. So, it's, but it is, it's filled with, uh, uh, angular rocks with, with fieldstone color. So, so I, uh, thank you for that, and, and, yeah, yes. Um, so, again, we can provide some additional detail in this, but we wanted to make sure that we did include it, and we are, we did actually show it on the, the site plan that we presented, that, that sign, um, in this location here adjacent to the, to the proposed driveway, um, you know, to make sure there's no conflict with the, with the septic area. Um, that, uh, that's the majority of the, the presentation. We can, I guess at this point, we can either, I guess I'd like to hear the, the commission's thoughts and questions, and then maybe we can go back and talk about some of, uh, staff's I guess I, I just, you know, I guess through the chair, I don't know if you'd like me to, to kind of focus on some of the comments first, or...
Well, I, I would prefer to do that because it may answer a lot of the commission's questions that, then we don't have to go over twice.
Sure. Okay. Um, so I'll start with, um, I'll start with Scott's comments. Uh, some of the informative and administrative things, those are, those are, uh, uh, those can be addressed. Um, from a technical standpoint, the layouts, um, driveway radii, we can, we can expand those, and actually the plans we presented to, actually, we've incorporated a lot of these, um, into the, into our, what we've present, what we've presented to, just to, we, we like to address as many as we can. Um, the driveway radii is no issues, um, better maneuverability for large trucks. We've provided, one of the things that the site is constrained in size in the large wetland area really does restrict and limit the amount of developable area, but we have designed this and we have been able to provide, um, truck turning movements which show how trucks can come through here. Essentially, trucks will, the truck will come in, it'll go over the, um, the scale, it'll be weighed, it'll then dump the material that has to go through processing, or it'll possibly bring material to one of the bins if it's already a, a material that can go right into a bin storage. It will, uh, then come around, it will have to likely back up down this corridor to get loaded by whatever bin and maybe leave it, it may be, uh, bringing to its next location. Um, and then it does have the ability to navigate through here, go back on the scale before it leaves the site, and then exit through the, uh, the, the main site driveway. Um, I, I think we can, we can certainly work with Scott to, to make sure he's comfortable with those turning movements, but I think we can, we certainly took that into consideration in, in designing the, the property. Improvements for removing existing driveway should be indicated. I think we've, we've added, we can add some, certainly add some calls to that. We're going to obviously remove the, the pavement, we're going to remove the, um, the subbase, replace it with topsoil so that we can actually provide and plant landscaping through here. Um, I will say, incorporated in our plans, part of the, um, uh, the proposed Pepper Street project, um, this area will be impacted from an operations standpoint as they do this work and lower this road. So, there is a temporary access drive, which the DOT is proposing, um, which essentially is going to come from this location here. We've identified that on our plan. So, from a phasing standpoint, we would actually propose to, um, maintain this area so that we can maintain that access through here and, and probably forego the planting of these plantings until that work is finished, because we won't be able to access the property through this driveway during that site, during that roadway construction because they are lowering the grade there, four to four and a half feet. So, during that interim period, what the DOT plans have is essentially they're going to be doing all the work on this side of the road, that traffic will get routed around, and then there will be a temporary access here. The, at the, um, the end of the widening actually s- s- almost coincides with, with this side, or, excuse me, the end of the, uh, the, the significant drop in grade from existing conditions kind of coincides with this area. So, that's, we have proposed that to, and designed this to, to, uh, account for that from that temporary access standpoint while the roadway is under construction. Dimensions of the proposed walks we can add, the methods of containment control, the surge pile should be discussed. So, that is a, a good, good point, and I, and I did bring that up. Um, you know, again, this, this pile continuously grows and shrinks and grows and shrinks and grows and shrinks, and it'll probably be empty, um, a- a- at a number of times. Because of that activity, because it's constantly in flux, we were requesting to, to leave it in an open area. If the commission feels strong, could possibly provide, um, maybe, uh, a row of, uh, concrete blocks to kind of create a bin for that material, but from an operations standpoint, that material, every time a truck drops a load, it gets bigger, but it's constantly being, um, uh, scooped up with the loader and brought into the facility, so we, we, we did not propose it to have to be contained. Um, and, and those are the reasons why, but obviously, and we do feel that we have, we have met the screening requirements with not only the board-on-board fence, but the extensive landscape plan. But again, i- i- if the commission feels strongly, um, we can certainly look at something like that. Also, there were comments about the containment of these piles and how small they are. Again, this operation, it's a, it's a, it's a constant operation of, material falls on the ground, you're picking it up and you're moving it, because if, there isn't room for it to, to become, um, too tall of a pile or anything like that, it's a constantly managed thing. Additionally, I will say, one of the other conditions of the Wetlands approval, which is something we offered during the hearing, is this site will have a, uh, a permanent sweeper, so that there will constantly be a maintenance operation of, um, you know, it'll likely be a, uh, a bobcat or something similar with a sweeper, a cashman on the front. So, this thing's going to be constantly being cleaned throughout the operations of the property so that it, it is maintained in a, in a, a neat, you know, and run in a neat and orderly manner.
What's the height of the surge pile?
It's going to vary. I- i- it's not going to go, I mean...
Maximum.
I think from a ma- I, I would be surprised if that thing ever exceeded, you know, eight to 10 feet in height, because of the operation itself. I mean, it's constantly, it's constantly managed. Um, you know, they don't...
What's the width of the diameter of the surge pile?
I think what we've shown here, and we have called out an area for that, I believe. I thought we did. Yeah, can, so we, we, we did include that area. So, we have a total area of outdoor storage of 5,631 feet.
The diameter of the surge pile?
I'm going to guess that diameter is probably 40 feet.
And so figuring the angle of the curve, how tall could it be?
That surge is about more than 40 feet. You look at three parking spaces, which is a little less than 30 feet, it's more than six parking, perhaps.
Maybe it's 50. Um, it's not that much bigger. I mean...
And that's if it stays that circle too. What's the sum that's 50 feet?
Yeah.
So, how tall could it get? You know, if you consider angle of repose.
Angle of repose, yeah. Um, I don't have that answer right off the top of my head. I, I'm not sure. I could, I could do that research for you.
If you go by the, uh, zoning regulations, two to one is the maximum slope, so 12 and a half, 13 feet.
It's about 40 per radius.
Is it, is it 40?
Forty, oh, forty.
Radius or diameter?
So, it could be as high as 20 feet and still comply with the...
It's drawn at 60 feet.
Yeah, uh, that, that sounds correct. Yeah.
So, it's 60 feet in diameter?
No, ra- uh, diameter, correct.
How high could that pile be then? Okay, the two to one, it could be 30 feet high.
But, but there's, th- there isn't a, there isn't a mechanism to make it 30 feet high, because that pile is going to be, you're going to have a traditional, um, you know, uh, uh, dump trailer come into the property, raise its bed and drop that material. There are, there's not going to be a ramp to dump material on top of it to increase the height of that pile. It's going to be...
But there's nothing preventing them from creating a ramp with the spoils pile.
Well, I think, you know, frankly, I don't think there's room for it. There, there's not enough room on the, there's not enough room to operate, because you've got to remember, you have to be able to get behind the building to access this pile, you have to be able to get around the building to bring, to bring trucks through here. If this thing gets too large and rural, you're not going to be able to get the material in and out. They're not going to be able to operate a business and actually, you know, um, sell material if it gets, if it gets too large. There's just not enough room on the property. I agree with you. If they were to build a ramp and they were to, they could make it 60 feet tall, but there just isn't enough room to, to actually accommodate that. So, again, so a method of containment, I think we could, you know, we could theoretically potentially provide some, you know, maybe mafia blocks to kind of create a bin to, to manage that pile, but again, I really think that from an operations standpoint...
Well, just from an operations standpoint, if they want to try to maintain a roadway around that pile, they, they might need something.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, from an operations standpoint, again, they're going to, they're going to have to maintain the edge of that pile to make sure they can get in it, in it, in and around it.
You know, one of the things that the Wetlands Commission was talking about, wanted to relay to the P&amp;Z was that they were concerned that none of these piles had any kind of, what they were thinking was a two or three-sided very, like a cheek wall that would provide a means for controlling it in terms of, but they, they were worried that the loader would be trying to scoop it up, but instead be kind of pushing the piles, pushing it, because there's nothing to hit up against. So, they, they... So they, they thought that having a, uh, two or three-sided short wall would be better, because then it could hit the wall and scoop up and, and that material could be confined within that area. That's what they were talking about. They were worried about it just kind of getting pushed all over the place, depending upon what the conditions were.
What's that, the southeast corner now, is that a retaining wall?
Uh, this is a retaining wall, the site drops in grade pretty, um, pretty quickly through here, so we are proposing a retain wall in this location to bring that elevation up.
The wall drops down, so it's not, drops down to the, away from the building.
The top of it, that the elevation?
That's not high, that's not high.
Right, so it's not gonna be like-
Well, they're contained in that area.
I guess they could build it a little higher than, than the ground, but-
I think that ma- that max height is about, uh, nine to 10 feet. And again, we were actually trying to, it was interesting, the, the, um, the Pepper Street plans had actually identified a very small, um, wetland area over here. Our soil scientists went out and said, you know, it's a low-lying area, but it's not actually wetland soils. Nonetheless, we wanted, we didn't want to impact that, we didn't want to raise that question. So we're, we're really limited what we were doing down here and wanted to maintain as much separation from this area and from this southerly property line as we could. So we really kind of established that area, that existing grade, at least on this side, and then just essentially built up from there. We could have, you know, probably graded right through this to reduce the height of that wall, but we wanted to limit our, limit our disturbance.
You said there's a fence going around there too?
Yes, so we're proposing, not only will there be a chain link fence and, um, on, uh, and garterel on top of this retaining wall, we're also proposing a six-foot-high board-on-board fence, a screen fence along this entire edge, um, to provide additional screening from Pepper Street itself. So when you actually look at the, the landscaping, the fact that we have this fence here, you're gonna be driving up and down Pepper Street and you won't even know, um, that's there. It'll be very difficult to see, I don't think you're gonna see the top of a surge pile even if it did exceed 10 feet in height, but I don't think you're gonna actually have a, a pile that large.
Well, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, addressing what Scott just said about them pushing the pile.
Yep.
I'm a loader operator, I'm gonna smash the crap out of that fence. So my suggestion would be maybe you put a row of mafia blocks down the bottom of it, so when the loader goes to scoop it up, he bangs into that and doesn't tear your fence down, otherwise it can cost you a small fortune.
Yeah, we could certainly look at that.
It's just a, you know, a thought.
Yeah.
Cause, and as far as putting bins in there, look, if I drive a trailer dump, I'm not coming in here because it's too tight, I'm not gonna go work my butt off just driving in there. So you gotta make it easy for those guys too, they're gonna be coming in now, so. And how much room is in the back there, is that where you're loading from, the back of the building there from the storage bins?
Back here?
Yeah. Is that where the, the doors are?
Yes, that's where the doors are.
And how, how much room do they have, you got room enough for a loader and a, a truck to maneuver around it? Just the mafia block might solve a lot of this problem.
Yeah, so I definitely think we can, we can, I, I would just say because it, I mean, w- we'll, we'll work, um, closer with the applicant, unfortunately, he couldn't be here this evening, but we'll talk about any other means and methods we can do around here. But again, these piles are constantly managed, they're constantly pulled off, so we were, we didn't want to provide or propose large containment, because then it is gonna affect the ability to actually get through here. And we'll certainly look to see if we can incorporate some additional containment there.
Are those piles coming right out of doors?
Uh, yes, they're coming off conveyors, they're gonna be, the, the conveyors essentially extend outside of the building itself.
And there, and it drops?
And then it drops into, into a small pile.
So that would kind of maintain where the pile was.
Yeah, it's a small conical pile, I mean, these, these conveyors are only so high from a, from an equipment standpoint, and they're not putting in any additional, you know, large-scale operations, you'll see, you'll see conveyors come off of a screener to hit another conveyor that stacks it up to 30-foot tall. Then you have a huge cone of a lot of material. That's not what, that's not the intent of this operation, it's to, it's a, it's gonna be a constant management. So I think, I think these, I, I think these, uh, I think the max height of these conveyors coming off that, coming off the, the screen bed, I don't, I think they may be 10 feet. So you're gonna have very small conical piles there, and again, they're constantly have to be moved.
And it's all used material, there's no waste?
Um, no, even the, even the byproduct is actually just a really high fine content material that can usually be used. It can either be mixed with clean stone to create a road-based material, or it can be used as like a clay liner, or clean fill for jobs, things like that. So all of it can essentially be used in the construction activity. A gate or other access barrier of the, back to Scott's comments, a gate or other access barrier of the south on the retaining wall, southeast corner of the site should be provided, we can certainly do something like that, incorporate that. Some of the grading comments, grade the driveway to avoid pre-flue punting, I think we've already addressed that. A high point in the driveway, which provided the street line, we can do that. And again, this actually, this will be, this will be lowered considerably, um, but, um, you know, we've designed this to actually accommodate both the existing and the proposed grade.
You know, I might say for the commission that the, the sightline is an issue in terms of, uh, it, this is an existing site, and I'm trying to get, we, we have discussed trying to get the best sightline possible, but it's less than ideal, it may be less than ideal. Looks like it, it's gonna be less than ideal, but it's an existing piece of property, so the goal is to just find the best sightline possible.
His other grading comments, a high point off of bin three, we can, I think we've accommoda- accommodated. Curbs at the, along the back of the bins, I think either we adjust it or we can certainly adjust all these comments. Eliminate slopes greater than two to one, we can certainly do that, we, we don't wanna design things steeper than two to one anyways. Frontage for sightline improvements, we can do that. All of his ones are pretty much, you know, adding additional spots to the handicap ramp, things like that, et cetera. Traffic and safety, that's a site distance conversation, we have had extensive conversations about that. This, that is one of our primary concerns. Drainage and utilities, we, we talked about that, water service, we talked about, yeah, we are proposing a water line from this house to this building for dust suppression on those machines. And we could also probably incorporate a hose bib, um, to the exterior as well to assist in any additional dust suppression that may be required.
And, and as indicated in the past, there, there was, there were numerous comments that we worked through with the drainage calculation on the detention and the drainage system. I didn't look at the end of the Wetlands Commission.
Lighting and landscaping, lighting at the driveway entrance should be improved. You know, we, we, we always have these discussions. Scott wants more light at driveways, Will doesn't like as much light at driveways.
I'm agreeing with the code.
The code says so much lighting at the driveways.
Yeah, we had talked about that with the commission, that, you know, typically, um, you know, again, it's, I, I'm not saying more lighting on the property, but usually something at the, more toward the entrance is very helpful.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's lighting in Pepper Street.
There, there isn't, that's the whole point that, you know, when you have driveways-
It's not terribly bad, I drive it every day.
It, you know, if you have a driveway or an intersection, it's a little brighter there and you can, you can see what's going on.
You have all those wall packs that light up on it.
Yeah, I mean, we can look at, we can certainly look at maybe shifting this, this light pole a little bit to increase the light levels at the driveway, we can, we can work with, with staff on that, yeah. Happy medium.
Happy medium there.
Absolutely.
Like lighting up over the street.
Eliminate spillage beyond the southerly property line, we can address all these, uh, all of Scott's concerns. Um, the, the details of the walls, our plans have incorporated, we're actually looking at those, um, large recon-type retaining walls, those large, uh, gravity-type block walls, um, which is actually a product that Connecticut Precast makes, another Monroe, uh, business, and we have incorporated those details on the plan. And we'll, we'll provide a formal response to comments and response with revised drawings reflective of our collective discussion this evening, that'll, that'll address all these items. Contingency on a highway modification permit, obviously, we know that. And then the, the bond estimate, Scott, I meant to bring this up with you today. So the entire property is within the upland review area, because this wetland towards the rear, there was, um, uh, wood frogs in this area, so it does constitute a vernal pool. The upland review area from vernal pools is 450 feet. Now, it's difficult to determine the overall extent, but when you look at where it possibly is, the entire property is in the upland review area. So our bond with the Wetlands Commission actually covers site stabilization and restoration for the entire property. Now, I know-
Actually, I, I don't recall that it did in this case. Cause I, I thought what I did by kind of error is, I thought I went to the, in the, the upland area that went with the rear wetland, and I took the rest of it from P&amp;Z, but I could double check.
Is all, okay.
What I tried to do is, yes, you're right, I, I'll subtract out whatever was wetlands.
Yeah.
So I'll double check, make sure I did do that, but I thought I did that, I, 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 what I'm saying is I didn't, when I did the bonding for wetlands, I didn't include this portion over here because I neglected that, that was wetlands. So I think what I did was I took the hundred and took from here back, and for this part, I took to the east. But I'll double check that.
Yeah, cause I know our, our estimate and our quantities were based on the entire property.
Yeah.
Because the entire property was up in review areas, so we thought the Wetland Commission would wanna be able to restore the entire limits, but we can, we can work through that, I think.
Yeah, I'll double check it.
That's, that's no issue.
I, I'm not looking for an overhaul.
Yeah. Now, but it is, but it is an interesting question, because I'm not sure how this commission has dealt with that in the past, because obviously, frankly, this commission wants the ability to call a bond if they need to as well. But I don't know if we've had a situation where, or at least that I can remember, where the entire property is covered under a wetland bond, um, because you can't issue a bond to both agencies, so I don't know how you double bond or, or how you guys have dealt with that in the past. I can't recall a situation that I've been involved in, but-
Yeah, I recall.
Yeah, my understanding is that each commission has the right to require that bond, but we've been trying to, I've been trying to subtract it out.
Mm-hmm.
But it's interesting, if, if the whole thing were to be, I haven't really come across that yet, where we-
Yeah, but I think on a project of this magnitude, we would want a bond.
Yep.
So we'll, we'll discuss that.
Yeah, we'll work through that. Um, so now to, to, to Will's comments, um, uh, you know, um, starting with the, with the general items, so the zoning location survey, we can address those, the, the narrative, we can provide some additional, um, uh, clarity as to that, you know, it's not a, a construction yard, and if we included that, that was, that was a mistake. I think I've presented what the operations of the facility are.
So what is, what is your intended primary use of this property?
We have multiple principal uses.
And what are they?
Uses that's allowed by the, in the, in all districts. D, commercial bulk storage completely contained within a building and warehousing, storage, and wholesale distribution of raw materials, work-in-process, finished products, building materials and supplies, subject to the following provisions, and primarily, one, materials must be stored within a building or structure. We're proposing, again, this 20,000-square-foot area of bin storage is one of the principal uses on the property, so that is one of the principal uses we're proposing.
Independent in the processing part?
It could be, because-
I'm asking, is it, could it be?
Partially, yes.
Under your proposal, is it independent? Under your proposal, what you're building in addition to that, is it independent?
Partially, yes, because they could have, you know, the, um, they could have, they could have material brought in that's, say, three-inch minus roadbase that can go directly into a bin, that isn't a part of or an accessory to the manufacturing operation. So because of that, um, we do feel like it really is multiple principal uses.
Okay, so again, what are those principal uses?
So the principal use would be that one I just mentioned, the commercial bulk storage under 4.3.3D, which represents about 20,000 square feet of building area. The other principal use is number, is 4.3.4C, manufacturing, manufactured compounding, assembly and treatment of articles made principally from previously prepared material. So that's gonna be actually the construction or the, the, the manufacturing of construction aggregates. So we're gonna take, so that means that, so any, so, a- again, if they, if they possibly, um, is part of a, a, a project, they're bringing in, um, construction material that may be a three-inch minus product or a larger product, that material is gonna go through that crushing operation, that manufacturing process, and they're going to be manufacturing construction aggregates, smaller construction aggregate, whether it's three-quarter inch stone, um, uh, inch and a quarter process, various materials that are come off through that crushing manufacturing operation. So that's our, that's another principal use, is the actual manufacturing per 4.3.4C.
Okay.
Those are really the two principal uses.
Okay.
And I know that was, I know that there's a lot of discussion, I know a lot of, some of the other comments from Will had to do with the outdoor storage, and how are we calculating the outdoor storage based on the principal use and the principal structure on the property? We're of the opinion that we actually have multiple principal uses. So because of that, the principal, the principal building areas is actually more than just the manufacturing building or just the office or just the bins, it's really a, an aggregation of all of them, because we, because they are all part of different principal uses on the property.
Then they would have their own outdoor storage based on their building.
Individually?
Well, they would have to, if you're making them separate uses, they have to comply individually. Can't give this guy's outdoor storage to this guy's.
The, the outdoor storage has to be directly related to the, to the primary use. If you look under your accessory, accessory uses, which is outdoor storage-
Yep.
It has to be directly related to your primary, your principal use. So if you have a 20,000-square-foot bulk storage principal use, you're allowed 20% of that that's related to your bulk storage primary use, principal use.
Agreed.
And same thing with the manufacturing.
Right.
Your, your bulk storage that's related to your manufacturing has to be directly related to your principal use.
So, um, okay, I think that's fine, I think, cause, cause again, we're, we're trying to, um, we're, we're trying to craft something here that's a little, obviously a little bit unique. I know the commission is obviously looking at regulations which would prohibit something like this, we weren't trying to-
Well, you know, to be quite frank, we don't want a construction yard.
We don't believe this is a construction yard.
Well, tell me then how catch basins and manhole risers and Belgium block relate to a manufacturing or bulk storage principal use.
Well, under 4.3.3D, that last sentence is building materials and supplies. Building materials and supplies include catch basins and pipes and risers and things of that nature.
And how does that relate to the warehouse?
Commercial bulk storage completely contained within a building and warehousing, storage and wholesale distribution of raw materials, work-in-process, finished products, building materials and supplies, subject to the following provisions. We feel that if we can meet the rest of these provisions, which we believe that we have, that falls underneath that principal permitted uses in all industrial districts.
Those supplies are gonna be indoor then?
No, tho- those, we can have, we can have some outdoors, but it can't exceed 20%. We are-
It says number one, the children's store on the side of the roof.
In industrial districts, an area equal to up to 20% of the first floor square footage is permitted for outdoor storage in an area approved by the commission.
Yeah, but the, the D, that stuff's indoors, and whatever your outdoor storage is, is something other than those. Otherwise-
How is, how is that?
Well, it doesn't make sense, what does one mean if number two, what you do outside?
You know, I thi- I, maybe the commission wants to take this up, because this is a principal permitted use in all industrial districts in the town of Monroe. This isn't a special exception use in only one district, this is the principal permitted use, with this language, in all industrial districts in the town.
All right, we'll, uh, we'll give that some more thought.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's move on, I don't wanna get stuck on one point.
Yeah, a- and I agree, but, but I do wanna hear the, if the commission does have, you know, if it, if it warrants discussion and conversation, I'd like to have that, um, but, but I, but we can keep moving. Zoning compliance table, um, uh, we can do all of those, we can address all of those from the zoning compliance.
I think we skipped a couple.
Okay, let me back, back up, so the pro- project narrative, processing facility, we talked about that, I think a little bit more detail. We can update the project narrative as necessary to, to clearly articulate that. Proposed condition, the engineering report regarding the size of the storage bins, we can make that consistent, so that's no issue. Professional prepared architectural drawings is not included, nor the plan signed and sealed is required per zoning. Again, the, the building has been designed by, by a building designer, um, under our- license, we can actually sign those plans, and we will be from a, from a planning and zoning standpoint. The structural plans associated with the, with the, uh, building permit application will likely be signed by somebody else, but they will have to meet the intent of what's approved by this commission, so we're gonna have that, that handled from a, uh, from a licensing standpoint and a professional, uh, signature.
Are you also going to prepare the, the design and the plans for the storage structures?
From a zoning standpoint, yes.
Okay, and are, are those structures gonna require a building permit?
They will, and those will have detailed structural design elements and things like that that will accompany that building permit application.
So then, these will be, the tax assessor will be assessing these as permanent structures?
Absolutely, they're permanent structures with a foundation and, yeah.
Okay.
We wouldn't be able to store things and satisfy that requirement if it wasn't. Um, zoning compliance table on sheet two one one should be revised, revised to reflect the following, all of these we can do, um, we had questions, revise the NA entries according, so the fourth bullet down and the fifth bullet down, we had questions on. Revised the NA entries accordingly to indicate the proposed and resulted yard setbacks for buildings at residential zone boundaries for the proposed converted office building, processing facility and covered storage bins.
And the bounty in the back of residential zone? Trails on residential zone front? Is that?
Is that property owned by Aquarian residential or industrial?
I don't know.
We, we can, we can address that, we can address it, not, not an issue, we can, we can deal with that.
You comply either way.
We're pretty far away from that property. Um, uh, all of the zoning compliance things we can address, that's not an issue. So, buildings and structures and outdoor stor- we believe we've designed something that complies with the regulations and is a, is a, is a principally permitted use. We can certainly expand to add some additional details regarding coloring and renderings and things like that, we can have that in advance of the next hearing. Um, we actually look to actually provide a lot of these details on some of these plans that we actually presented this evening, but we can actually expand upon that and provide a, a more comprehensive package for the commission and work with Will.
Yeah, I'd like to see a detail on the doors.
Sure, yeah, we actually have, there's a small detail up in this corner, but, um, we can, we can provide that for the commission. Um, the floor area for the office, we're seven more, or seven fewer parking spaces required, we can address that, we can, we can accommodate that. Again, the outdoor storage and the principal building area, we, again, we feel we have multiple principal uses, multiple principal buildings. If we wanted, if, if the commission is looking for us to do a calculation for, for outdoor storage related to the principal use that we have, we can do that. Yeah, covered storage bin, again, I think we, we, we addressed that. The zoning for outdoor storage for the surge pile, we did include that area as part of our outdoor storage area. The, again, the physical delineation controlled and contained by building structures, fencing, landscaping or combination thereof, the screen set area, we believe we meet the intent of the screening requirement, and we can certainly look at providing some additional mafia blocks to provide additional protections and, and, and-
Can you show them that? So, you know, I, I look at the, the piles in that bottom corner, which, and I get the whole thing about it has to go in quick and fast, but you have that huge area around there, and so if the piles are small, I'm assuming the, the machine that's being used is also probably small.
It's a conventional loader, yeah.
Full loader, I mean, but do you need all that area? Cause I'm worried about it migrating, the whole, cause it's, I mean, what, yeah, where your arrows, what is all that area?
This is for truck circulation.
I know, well, well, how, okay, so you need to turn the truck then that much?
Yeah, cause, cause what happens is trucks come in off of this, they come down through here, and then they have to back down here to get loaded, because there isn't enough room to turn down and then back all the way back. So, that's what this, this area is really for that truck circulation, so that's why the piles can't get big, cause then they're not gonna be able to a- navigate through them.
I, I wanted it actually even bigger so that the truck can just circle right around, which it can't.
Yeah.
It's gonna have to do the three point turn.
I mean, we had, our initial, some of our initial designs had, um, a lot more room back here, and then once, once we discovered that there was a vernal pool back in this corner of the, the wetland area, we had to really, our, our, our site was incredibly constrained, and we needed to make sure we were protecting that envelope to not affect those obligate species, so that kind of tightened everything up, and everything got a lot smaller.
I mean, did you look at any designs that actually put those two buildings together and where the tier would go directly into one or two of the larger bins and you can move it out of bin?
We, we did, we actually looked at, we looked at, um, at one point, we're actually looking at trying to tier this, so that, um, the bins were at a lower level and a lower elevation, and this was actually coming directly from those into there, the, the conveyor system was gonna be way more complicated and complex, but again, once, once some of these other things happened and everything shrunk, we had to really try to live within what we had left. But we did.
Sure, I, I believe it, I just don't understand how that would be more complex if it's dumping right into one of those big bins.
One of the other things that we actually, once we actually got topo on the property, the grades through here, um, i- it seems like from a historical operations standpoint, whoever was here and lived here and was doing whatever they were doing, you can kinda see it on, you can't really see it on aerial now, but it's overgrown, they just kinda continuously dump stuff back here, you can see old fill piles and things like that, so that also changed the, the grades of the land that we were dealing with from a design standpoint, so, from like the town topo we initially started with. Like, this is all overgrown on top of, you know, old rubble piles and things like that.
I mean, it's oddly enough, it, it all was one building that takes care of some other issues too.
How much parking do you actually need?
Far less, the, we, we wouldn't, I don't think we really need any of these spaces at all.
So, if you were to remove the spaces next to the front two bins and move that far bin over there, and then have it so you can at least circle trucks around and out?
Well, w- w- one of Will's points about eliminating seven spaces is good, cause we can probably do that. Which bin are you referring to relocating?
The far north one?
This one?
If that were to go down there, and then the trucks could just clean around and out?
Um, you know, we, we looked at that at one point, trying to see if we could actually provide circulation around here. Obviously, we have, you know, we have yard requirements and, and landscape buffers we have to maintain, so we couldn't provide that drive through here. The dising grade through here is actually relatively steep. What happens is all of these bins are actually at a higher elevation than the rear bins, so they're kinda stepped up, so that the floors are, there's, there's a, there's a drop in between the front and the back. But we did look at that, cause we were looking to see, well, can we get circulation around here?
What's those, you got two bins in the front, what's down the bottom part of it, the southern part of it, there?
So, this we have, um, uh, area for parking of construction vehicles, so dumps and things like that, dump trucks, um, they're all labeled on the plan, loaders, um-
And that's all the equipment that's gonna be used as part of this operations?
Uh, yes.
Oh, sure.
Well, it's actually, um, some of it would be yes. Number of dump trucks and some cat loaders. We do have some larger triaxes which may be used as part of the operation in terms of if someone needs to, if they need to load material and bring it off site, those would be used as part of that operation.
Absolute size excavators there too. Three thirty six cat?
Where you gonna use that?
Like, wouldn't be used on site, so obviously, if, if, if the equipment's not related to exact operations, we'd have to address that.
Cause again, this is not intended to be a construction yard.
Yes. Um, go- back to, to Will's comments, so we talked about the outdoor storage, we talked about that. Proceeding to conduct within an enclosed building, outdoor storage, we've talked through that, I believe. Smaller circles versus the surge pile, again, that's something that's actively managed and maintained.
Are those smaller piles, uh, included in your outdoor storage calculations?
They are, yeah, it's about five hundred and eighty eight square feet, I believe, shown on the site plan. Uh, notation of the project narrative, again, we can, we can refine that to further define the operations. Storage material directly related to the principal use of the site, again, I think we have multiple principal uses, I believe we tho- those elements do, do meet those requirements. Landscaping, um, foundation planting is consisting of trees, shrubs and ground cover species to provide all sides of the building, I think this landscape pan- plan has actually been revised to provide some of those things, or we certainly can. Uh, some of the other ones, um, trees and shrubs throughout should be added to the three empty landscape islands located close to the proposed office building, you know, we, we, we wanted to focus our investment in landscaping around the perimeter from a buffer standpoint, so, we, 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 we didn't propose extensive landscaping in those islands, um, uh, you know, I, I believe, again, we're providing, um-
They're not that big, it's not an extensive, it would be, but they're just gonna turn into muddy holes if you don't plant.
Well, the other thing is, you know, the studies have shown that the internal landscaping helps to prevent the heat up of the site, and, uh-
Yeah.
You know, you have a big area of pavement there, any, any little bit of shading that you can provide would be beneficial.
Uh, and we can, we can look at that to see if we can, uh, address that a little bit more.
I don't know if it's current industry, it's not the most attractive building in town.
Uh, it's serving as screening though, it's serving as a buffer?
No, it does screen back of it, but the building itself isn't all that attractive, so, and you kinda left the whole window open.
I mean, we may be able to look at maybe dispersing through there to, to balance it.
Yeah, you fix that building up at all?
We aren't proposing any, um, facade renovations at this time, no.
Cause it's in rough shape.
I mean, anything that would have to be done to address it from a structural standpoint and operations standpoint, but we weren't proposing-
Yeah, it's, it's static.
I think we can, we can certainly work with the landscaping comments and, and, and meet with Will and try to, um, appease as much of those as we can, I, and I hear your concern about the, uh, the islands and the, and the park area, we use that eat island, eat island effect, and I do agree with you that, that does, does work. Lighting, I think we can, we can deal with these, uh, that's not an issue. General accessory components, the, the septic systems, again, I, 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 I talked about kinda why we put them there, cause it's right up against the driveway, so you're not gonna really landscape that area extensively anyways, we thought that would be the right place for it, rather than in a larger area, um, cause you wanna maintain a little snow shelf along the edge and the shoulder for that driveway. Um, and in terms of locating in a different location, our septic investigation out there, we, we did do with the health department, they didn't observe all of our test holes, based on the grades, in order to try to design this so that we could, we could accommodate both the existing Pepper Street grade and the proposed Pepper Street grade as part of that project, we were limited in terms of where we could put this system, so that's kind of the, the best opportune place based on our other site constraints in terms of grading, that's where it fit, that's where we had decent soil, so that's where we proposed it. Um, the facility sign, we have identified an area on the site plan, we have provided a, 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 a basic detail, but we can provide additional details for the commission to consider. Construction details, we can add those. Plan revisions. I think these are relatively easy, the date stamp, that's, that's nothing. The regulated wetland upland review area limit line, again, the entire site's actually within that limit area because of the vernal, the buffer. In Monroe, the, the buffer from vernal pools is four hundred and fifty feet, so that entire area is encompassed. Paved material proposed throughout the parking spaces, again, it's all, I think we've actually done that already. Different curb materials, we can address that, the dimensions of the sidewalks, we can address that. From a, from a dumpster standpoint, and Will, thank you for bringing this up, um, you know, from a, from a normal operation, you know, from an office operation, we don't actually intend or, or anticipate the generation of a lot of refuse that's gonna require a dumpster, so we didn't actually show them, cause we assumed we'd be using more residential type structures for trash removal, however, we did actually show on the plan a location where we could provide and accommodate a dumpster pad in the future, that's located here, um, and we added that to the plan, so I think that should satisfy that.
Well, that's not what I was asking, I don't, I, I'm fine if you don't need the dumpster, but where are you putting the residential things, I mean, are they gonna just hang out there front, are they gonna hang out in the back?
I, I think right now, they, they sit right here, next to the propane tanks.
You know, put them in and so we don't see them?
Yeah.
That's all?
Sure. Storage location screen for the refuse, okay. Retaining wall, top and bottom wall eyes, I think we, we, we did that, we can, we can do that, and I think that's all of his comments, so I guess now it's really, I'd love to hear from the commission.
Is the material being sold on the property or no?
Uh, is the material being, yes, the, the material on the property will be sold, yes.
No, no, is it being sold on the property, are trucks coming in and purchasing materials?
Yes.
Or is it just?
Yes.
All right, so they come in, they exchange money, they take the material and they leave?
That, yeah, I mean, logistically, they'll come in, they'll get weight, they'll get a ticket, they'll get a bill.
Gotcha, okay, I just wanna make sure it wasn't just a fleet of trucks.
No, it's, it's not, it's not just a fleet of trucks, um, I don't believe they're gonna be looking to do like delivery of materials, it's really contractors, and it's not like, it's not like you could go there and buy, fill up the bed of your car with three quarter inch stone, that's not the, that's not the intent, this is for serving the construction industry.
That's it for now.
Good. How tall is the fence you're proposing to shave the, uh, with surge pile?
Six foot, board on board, screen fence.
And the landscaping, how tall will the tallest pieces of the landscaping be?
Did not bring my landscape architect to me, I thought we'd be okay, but let's see, we've got, um, we've got some, I think, uh, some under story trees out there, eastern red buds, we've got some-
We've got ten to twelve foot.
Blossom firs, yeah, ten to twelve, and that's at planting, so they'll grow, yeah.
Only, the only reason I'm concerned is just shielding the surge pile from the road, and as you said, you don't think it'll be greater than eight to ten feet, uh, but if it gets higher than that, then it will, it will be seen from Pepper Street without those additional trees and landscaping pieces.
Yeah, then another component is Pepper Street is considerably lower down there, there's a good grade change from, from the surge pile down, like Pepper Street, the existing grade down there is, uh, let's see, four twenty, the finished grade where that surge pile is, is about four thirty two, so that's already twelve feet up in the air, so you're looking basically up a hill with, with vegetation and a fence, so I think we should be okay there.
That's great.
Yeah.
And for the lighting, you're going to, are you going to, uh, replace the existing floodlights with duct pipe pipelines?
Yeah, we would be doing that as part of this application, yes.
That's all I have?
Okay. On the crushing operation? It's gonna be contained in the building?
The, the operations themselves, yes, will be within the building, yes.
Is that building air conditioned?
Uh, no, it is not climate, climate controlled.
What are you gonna do about the noise from the crusher?
Um, there'll be, there'll be noise attenuation incorporated into the building itself.
So, that's cause the door's closed?
Well, even with the, just the general construction of the building, there'll be dampening of the noise throughout the-
So, you have, do you know how many decimals this crusher puts out?
Um, we do not, I, 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 I do, I don't have that information right in front of me.
We really, really need to know that.
Okay.
Because with the doors open, we need to know how far distance is it going, do you do a study on that?
Uh, we did not do a comprehensive noise study, we'll obviously have to comply with the requirements of the regulations, um-
Well, cause there's gonna be a difference if the doors are closed or the doors are open, but the building's not air conditioning, in the summer time, those doors are gonna be open.
But they're gonna be open any time the plant's running, because-
Well, I mean-
The discharge from the plant is going out the doors.
Yeah, but if it doesn't meet it, then the doors, the crusher couldn't run.
They can't run the plant when the door's closed.
That's correct.
So, you didn't do any kind of study on that?
Uh, we didn't, cause we will simply, although we have to comply with the regulations, so they're gonna have to do what they can from a dampening standpoint to-
Well, you're gonna have to show the commission that, so they can approve it without having understanding that it's part of the, those regulations.
Um, is that precedent? Um, is that precedent? Has this commission required noise studies for all other applications?
We did it on the gun range.
Well, no, but we don't.
We did it on the gun range.
Actually, on the gun range, there was a requirement established for monitoring after the fact, there wasn't a noise study conducted previously.
No, but this is a crusher.
Sure.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, this is, this is a big difference than, than a bunch of others. I mean, this thing is constantly running for whatever, eight hours, twelve hours a day. These do make a lot of noise. That's why I'm asking about that.
I'm just reviewing the noise ordinance again, and the, and the regulations, we can certainly, we can certainly provide that information in terms of what the, the audible levels are for this. And obviously, from an operation standpoint, they have to comply with the regs. You know, it's just a general zoning requirement that everybody has to comply with the regs from a noise standpoint.
I was just wondering if you did anything like that, or if you.
Uh, um, to this point.
I mean, the other difference is, the gun range is also provided in the architectural plan, noise dampening measures and architectural details in the building. So, I mean, it was sort of, they did announce, show what it would be, based on, you're right, they did the testing afterwards, but they have built in quite a few mechanisms regarding. And it all enjoys as well.
We can provide that information.
The other thing is, you keep saying about the material, but you don't actually give me exactly what material you're gonna be putting on that property.
So, any material, or any and all material that's gonna come into this property is gonna meet the definition of clean fill, as provided by DEP. Um, so that, that can, that's a broad range of material, it can be regular earth material, it can be blasted rock from somewhere else, it can be gravel coming out of a, an excavation somewhere else. It can be reclaimed asphalt. Any of those materials.
You're talking about millings?
Uh, not necessarily millings, because you're not gonna take millings and run them through the crushing operation, but if part of a road demolition, you're just digging up asphalt and reclaiming it, that could go through this operation. But millings itself wouldn't necessarily go through this type of operation.
So, you're not gonna be milling on this property?
No.
But you're gonna bring that in still?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I heard mixes stuff, so can all that stuff draw in the same, go through the same system, or do you have?
It can, but there's, it, it can, but it's kind of, you, you wouldn't wanna put millings through there.
I mean, you can have concrete, you can have, I heard rock, and rocks can have dirt perhaps.
Yep.
And you can have asphalt, so.
It all depends on what they're making, and what, uh, yeah, if they're trying to meet a spec or things like that, yeah.
They don't have to clean it afterwards, or whatever.
Yeah, they'd have to go in, they'd have to, you know, they'd have to clean off all the belts, they'd have to clean off the, those, those screen decks, I don't know if you've ever seen a screen, screener in operation, but those decks are constantly maintained, because they constantly wear it, and they constantly get holes, when you're putting this type of stuff through there, that the cleaning at the end of the night and the end of the day is, is extensive, and all these, you know, all the equipment is gonna have to be maintained and pristine condition, or it's not gonna work from an operation standpoint, so.
Or taking the big rocks and making the middle rock?
Yeah.
Taking big piles of soil and sifting them out to someone else?
Well, they're not gonna, they wouldn't, mostly just rock, I mean, you're not gonna put general fill or, or overburner, things like that through this type of plant, because, you know, like, the, the crushers work when they're crushing stuff that's hard, if you put soft stuff in there, it actually affects their operation, then it clogs up the, the, the facilities.
So, could it potentially be used for, you knock down a building, made of brick, and bring all the brick and pulverize the brick?
Potentially, yeah, that meets the definition of clean fill by DEP.
And how did the origins of, of all that material get handled?
It's based on the, the, um, it's a requirement for when anything comes in, they're gonna have to have a ticket and a certification as to what it is.
Do they have to have a certain license for that, or is it just, if you do that, you have to do it?
Um, I don't know.
Registration, or, I mean, how does, who's regulating those tickets?
Well, the, the DEP does, any, if anything comes from a site that's known to be hot, that has to be, that, that, there's actually a requirement to like know where it goes.
Cause you can get it best as early.
That's gotta be brought to a different site, for the permit.
Well, if you do it properly, yes, but, you know, the thing comes, you, they need that ticket to tell them that, so, right?
Yeah, but, but from an operation standpoint, if they were to take something in, right, let's say they take something in and it gets mixed in with everything else, and then it goes out the door. They're not liable for everywhere it goes.
But they wouldn't want it to come in, so.
Exactly, that's what I mean, yeah. There, yeah.
They have a check before it can come.
Right.
Anything else, Will?
Well, yeah, well, cause I have concerns about the asphalt, cause the asphalt holds certain chemicals, it's not really clean fill, so.
For DEP standards, it is.
No, I understand that, so what kind of measures do you have for treating the water runoff from the asphalt?
Well, any and all material, so first of all, it's, it's gonna be covered, it's going to be housed indoors, right, so.
Now, you said that your surge pile's gonna be outdoors.
Surge pile's outdoors, correct. But once, if, if it was, if it was gonna get processed and brought through the plant, and then, then it gets stored under, indoors.
I got that.
Anything that would come directly and be in this, in this, in the surge pile for whatever that short duration is before it goes into the plant. We have, this entire site is, is paved, right, so any stormwater associated with that's gonna be collected and routed through a hydrodynamic separator, which will, which will both deal with not only any suspended solids, but also it'll remove the, the, I don't know, floatables or anything else, any.
How about the chemicals?
Yeah, that, that all gets, as part of that swirl concentration, that actually is also collected as part of that operation.
Collected where?
In, in the, in the water quality unit itself.
Okay, and then that's treated and then released? No. You're gonna bring it through a filtration system, is that what you're gonna do? I'm saying to you, the chemicals are in the asphalt, how are you gonna contain them on the site without having to get into the burnout pools?
Is the hydrodynamic separator remove hydrocarbons?
Um, it removes floatables, including like, you know, it, it separates that out.
But not away?
Um, it, it does, it does, it holds, it, it gets collected and routed, it, it gets, it gets contained and separated from the balance of the stormwater that leaves it and goes into the underground detention system. Again, there's actually, there, there's, there's very little evidence that I've seen that if you bring in asphalt, reclaimed asphalt, that rainwater hitting it actually results in oils or hydrocarbons as, from a runoff standpoint.
Well, it's not all one piece, it's, you're bringing asphalt, you're gonna bring in chunks, so there's gonna be little pieces, there's gonna be, some is gonna be ground up, you're gonna get, so you, it's not gonna be all one piece. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But it's not, when you, when you process asphalt or make millings out of it, those chemicals are released.
Right, we're not, we're not making millings out of it, we would be processing it to, to make it into like, uh, you know, it, to break the huge five-inch chunks down into like, uh, you know, one or two-inch chunks, but then that material's gonna be quickly picked up and put directly under a bin for storage.
I, I got all that, I'm saying, you're storing it outside of course.
Correct.
So, on public.
Yes.
And so, and I just have concerns with that being, I, I understand all the other clean material, and I got all that. I mean, asphalt's a big thing, because you have burnout pools, you have all sorts of stuff, I don't know if the wetlands got into that or not, they probably did, I don't know, but.
Keep, keep in mind that all of this is asphalt. So, any, any runoff coming off the surge pile is running across asphalt.
Right.
So, any runoff that you get from the surge pile is the same as you would get runoff from the parking lot.
Don't have that, but I'm saying, this is gonna be a concentrated, more concentrated area than.
I mean, I, we don't know the science pencils, but I would assume there's a slight difference between compacted asphalt, Ave Man, and a pile of stuff that's been.
Anyways.
But it's not, it's not millings. No, no, I know, it's not millings, but it's fractured, and, you know, it, it would have to sit there a while, I think, to reach out anyway.
I, I agree, and, and from an operation standpoint, they're not gonna be able to, there's not enough room to, to have a massive pile of asphalt mixed with other stuff, nor are they gonna wanna leave it there for a long time, if they happen to get a load of that in, they're gonna wanna get that in and process and done, because they're not gonna wanna have it to co-mingle with any other products that they're making.
And usually, that stuff is, when it comes in, it's mixed with, um, gravel.
Yeah, the subbase.
That's how they take it.
When it rips out, yeah.
Take a point.
And, and from there, for, if, if they're happening to be processing that material, they're gonna be making a specific product for that, for use as fill somewhere else. So, that's gonna be, you know, they're gonna have to deal, they're gonna have to move the screener decks, they're gonna have to change all that stuff, so that the products that come off this screener are exactly what they wanna make, so. So, I don't think, I think the likelihood of, of any of that material coming in and staying for a long period of time is, is, I, I don't see that as a high probability.
How much, your storage bench, how much do they hold, each one of those?
The, uh.
Yeah, three scrouds and square feet big, I think.
Hmm?
I think they're like three thousand square feet bins?
Yeah, I mean, the total, the total square footage is like twenty thousand square feet. We, uh, any of these bins are not excessively tall, or they're, the, the, the largest ones are twenty feet, but, but based on, um, I'd have to, I can get back to you on that, cause, cause we did calculate the actual storage volume, I just don't happen to have it in front of me.
It's a little over a hundred yards per foot.
It's, it's a lot of storage in those bins, if you look this, not that it matters, it's a size, look at the size of the parking spaces compared to the size of the bins.
Yeah, well, the bins are thirty-three hundred square feet, so if you had to put a material in there, it would be a hundred. I'm saying, if you had a foot, it would be a little over a hundred yards.
Yeah, okay.
So, you put a lot of, a lot of material.
Fifteen times that, or ten, at least ten times that.
What else we have?
Times five, yes, a lot of material for that.
Michael?
I'm just eager to see the doors.
Okay.
Details on the doors, are they all, are they going to be the same type of door? I mean, you mentioned.
For, well, the doors on the bins are gonna be that vinyl door, we can provide that detail, but then the doors on the, the manufacturing facility, those are, a lot of those are roll-up doors. Yeah, roll-up and, and some vinyl where needed.
That's it? Okay.
You know, just a suggestion, um, the doors on the manufacturer, I don't know if you can look into this, but you could, you could get doors that open from the middle up and down.
Okay.
And when you have a conveyor belt, you could have just the upper portion open, and, you know, you, in other words, you could maybe do it so that you could minimize the amount of, of opening.
Right.
Uh, when, when, when the thing is sticking through there.
Then the loader's gonna rip it apart, and scoop this stuff out.
No, no, I'm talking about where the conveyor comes out of the processing building. Um, dust control, not in the facility itself, but in the yard, you're gonna have your crusher dumping out three or four places, dumping piles, loader scooping it up, driving it around to the back, how are you gonna mitigate the dust problem?
They can incorporate, they can incorporate misters and things like that inside the bins themselves, so, like, under structure, so that as you dump material, it's constantly being suppressed from a dust standpoint. Um, there's a number of things they can do, um, we can certainly provide some additional detail elaborate on that for you.
I'd like to see a little more information on that, because I can see in the middle of, well, not this August, but in other August, where we're gonna have rain for a couple of weeks, and, uh, you know, this place being a big dust hole.
Yeah.
The wellness commission required that they have a sweeper that doesn't leave the property.
Do they require that it be used?
It was incorporated to be included in the, uh, operations manual, so, yeah.
Yeah, well, uh, oh, I haven't.
Are they open during the winter, too?
Um, there, there may be, but I think that would, it's unlikely, cause there's not a lot of, depending on the winter, unless it's a very mild winter, like a couple of years ago. But if it's a really tough winter, like a couple of years ago, then they're not gonna be, no one's doing anything, so.
No.
Um, I, I'm sure you've seen the inland wetlands notice certificate decision.
Yes.
Last page, noted in addition to the above, the commission has requested the need for open wall areas at the top of the covered material storage buildings, as is requested, and is requesting that the planning and zoning commission consider requiring that said open wall areas be eliminated. Is there a particular reason why you're leaving the walls open?
Um, I mean, part of it's the, just the construction of the, of the blocks themselves and the height of the, 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 um, the roof. Um, trying to limit the amount of the, the extent of the block structure. I mean, we could possibly look at, maybe looking at, uh, expanding them on the ends, or the, the act, or the, or the backs, or even looking at maybe doing a vinyl covering through there, too. We, we can evaluate that.
Do some, uh, you know, whatever your, your roof material is, do some enclosures along the top of the block with something similar to that. Again, this would also help to eliminate some of the dust problems on windy days. So, I, I think you should consider closing in the, the side walls.
Sure.
Of the structures.
We'll, we'll look at that, thank you.
I have nothing else specific at this time. Staff have anything else?
I'm all set.
No. All right, well, let's, uh, let's see if the public, is there anyone here would like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here would like to speak in opposition? Any general questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Soli, back to you.
Well, I think, um, uh, I think we've had some great discussion this evening, what we'll do is, well, now, now that we've had a chance to go through Scott and Will's comments, I think I have a good handle on what the commission feels most strongly about, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll prepare revised drawings, submit it to the commission with a formal response to some of these items, and we'll, uh, continue into the next hearing.
Um, our next meeting is the sixteenth.
And our commission is Tuesday.
Is Wednesday.
No, it's Tuesday.
Tuesday, so we'll be after that?
So, the sixteenth is our next meeting.
Which we won't be able to.
One after that is September sixth.
I think that should be reasonable.
All right.
I, I, I guess I'll just come back to, and, and I, I know there's been a lot of discussion about outdoor storage and principal uses, do you think that you may be able to give us some guidance on how we should be proceeding? And that, should we look at the two principal uses and maybe trying to break out outdoor storage relating to those principal uses for those areas? And, and I know we've had broad discuss, I'm just trying to get, get the temperature of the commission to how their feeling is versus our presentation.
The biggest thing that I know you're well aware of is that we do not have anywhere our regulations that we provide for construction yards. And nine times out of ten, these operations, and I'm not saying that your applicant is going to do something against the regulations, but nine times out of ten, sites like this turn into construction yards, and that's not permitted use. And we want to assure that that's not going to happen. I think the manufacturing of processed material out of construction debris is a very creative tack on your part. And I, I think it's really pushing the limits of what our regulations allow, so we wanna be very careful that this doesn't turn into something that we don't want or is not allowed. So, I mean, we take that guidance, and I think that's sufficient.
I, I appreciate that, thank you.
All right, anybody else have anything else for tonight? All right, we continue to September sixth.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is item fourteen, under deliberations and determinations, give a permit amendment modification for SEP two thousand fifteen dash fifteen dash A two, file one five six six A five hundred Pepper Street. Will, what do you have?
Exhibit one, permit pool amendment modification application, exhibit two, party narrative, exhibit three, M.O. correspondence from Bob Maloney, legislates and Phil Wild. Exhibit four, plan set, exhibits five, ART comments fire marshal, exhibit six, ART comments sound engineer, exhibit seven, ART comments building department, exhibit eight, planning, ART comments, exhibit nine, amended site utility plan, sound engineer, exhibit eleven, application for acceptance of wetland agent approval. And I just was handed in the copy of the certified mail notices to. exhibit eleven, application for acceptance of wetland agent approval, and I just was handed in the copy of the certified mail notices to Aquarian and to the Public Health, state public health department. That's it.
And for the applicant?
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, Kevin Soli, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering, office is located at five, uh, five hundred Main Street in Monroe. Um, I here to talk about a project, uh, that's under construction, I think it's a gorgeous building at five hundred Pepper Street, the Caruba, um, uh, new corporate headquarters. We've been this, before this commission a couple of times, got an original approval, we actually then came in and modified that approval for a value engineering exercise. Now, as we've gone through the construction process, a couple of other things have come up that we wanted to come back before this commission to review. Um, we've, this has gotten an agent approval from the Wellands Commission for the minor changes that we have. Um, but just to, to, I'll be brief, just to locate, orient everybody. Um, here's the town of Monroe, this is also located, um, uh, just at the very forefront of the entrance of the Pepper Street Business Park. So this is Pepper Street, this is Main Street Route twenty-five, um, this is, uh, four eighty-five Pepper Street, and this is the property of five hundred Pepper Street, located right at the corner of, um, Pepper Street and Cambridge Drive, which is the entrance to the business park. Um, so, uh, this project again was previously approved, um, for a, uh, large-scale manufacturing and office building, um, uh, with extensive parking access off of both Pepper Street and Cambridge Drive. We're looking at to propose some very minor modifications to what was previously approved, we just wanted to run these by the commission. So, uh, um, from a site plan standpoint, we eliminated, in the front landscaped island here, we previously had a flagpole, that flagpole's been eliminated. Um, they, uh, for whatever reason, part, this is somewhat of a value engineering exercise, but they eliminated the flagpole in front of the property. We made some very minor landscaping and planting modifications, um, basically looking at changing out some species. The, um, uh, the owner of the property had, back when this project started in two thousand sixteen, had actually secured some nursery stock from a nursery that was going out of business, and we had tried to incorporate a lot of those plants into the plans. In the past two years, a lot of those plants either got too big to transplant, or they died, or whatever, so we had to supplement some of those, providing actually a much more fragrant plant profile. Um, that was one of their requests. Um, we, uh, added a generator pad, uh, to be located, uh, in this location, um, behind the transformer. Um, we're actually just adding the pad itself at this point, we're not necessarily, we're, we're installing the generator, but we're building the building to accommodate it. Um, so we wanted to make sure that was on the plan for modified approval. Um, part of the, uh, value engineering exercise is actually, the previous approval did have stamped concrete along the frontage of the, the building and the sidewalks. They have requested to eliminate that stamped concrete, really from a cost-saving standpoint. Um, the sidewalk itself exceeds the requirements from a zoning standpoint, it's extensive, it has great landscaping, but they're just looking to eliminate that stamped component. And then they've made a number of very minor interior building modifications, shifted walls, changed office areas, things like that, as they've gotten into the construction of the building. So very minor, and we've updated the parking table accordingly to reflect those new adjusted square footages. One of the other components that we actually added was a underground, um, storage tank, part of the, the operations of the facility. Uh, you know, they wanted to look at, so, so the operations itself, they make flavors, fragrances, and botanical extracts, so they'll bring in different chemicals, they'll use those, they'll, um, steep teas, things like that, they create the flavoring for Pez, stuff like that, so they wanted to make sure that some of their larger, um, tank storage and drums and things like that, they had, um, uh, floor drains, so that as they're hosing things down, or cleaning things off, or power washing, or things like that, they just have an ability to, to, to have those floor drains, and they can use those from a, from a, uh, operation standpoint. Um, because the site's, um, septic, all that area has to be drained and routed into an underground storage tank, which will be pumped out as needed. Our tank, we've located, is a four thousand gallon tank to be located in this portion of the parking lot here. We've actually provided to you correspondents from DEEP, saying that because of the constituents that could go into this tank, it doesn't require to be registered with them. Um, so that's part of the, the documentation, uh, for you. So we did add that tank. Um, we, uh, the generator pad, the tank, uh, you know, we made, this reflects the, the final, uh, septic system as built that was constructed. Um, the landscaping, very minor changes, it's actually a little bit more of a, more of a robust plan, I think. From a lighting standpoint, we eliminated the uplighting that was proposed for the flagpole, that's been removed. And we've also incorporated an irrigation plan, um, for the property, so we've provided a, a copy of that irrigation plan for the commission's consideration as well. And again, as I said, eliminated those uplights for the, for the flagpole for the lighting. I will say, I got a call from the client this afternoon, and he said that he is, um, interested in possibly putting up a deer fence around the side and rear of the property, that isn't on the plans, but would like to request to the commission if we could do that. Um, and he also talked about possibly putting a swing gate, um, here, and possibly one on this side, I'm not exactly sure how he wants to do that yet. But basically, so that after hours, they can put a gate up to prevent people from going to the rear of the facility, the loading dock area, and things like that. My thought is, we actually have more than adequate parking at this point, based on some of the changes to the, to the, um, uh, to the plan, so from a, from an operations, if we were to incorporate something like that, if this commission thought that was okay, to, to consider that. We could put one here, which wouldn't impact anything, but we could also put one here, but we may need to shift the parking slightly and add a landscape dial opposite it, so it could actually attach to something. But again, that's something I, that was a call I got on my way here, just before I got here, um, so.
Where do they want the deer fence?
They want, he said he wanted to put the deer fence on the side and rear. So, um, my thought it would be, obviously would be, it wouldn't be in the wetland, it would be kind of adjacent to the, to the detention basin, but along the perimeter.
So, in the up, certainly in the up.
In the upland, right, so I'm not sure, so that would be something we'd have to maybe go back from an agent approval standpoint.
That's something you gotta go to the commission for.
To install a deer fence.
Yeah, because they get, um, they have concerns about fencing, because it prevents wildlife.
Yep.
And that's not something I should be passing.
Isn't your parking edge along the eastern side, isn't it, on the setback line?
It is, but fences are allowed within.
Under six feet. I don't think a deer fence under six feet's gonna do a darn thing, really.
That's exactly what Doug said. Um, so, uh.
What do you need it for?
Keep deer out?
But just if they come up to those.
I guess, yeah, um.
Or keep them in.
I thought you were trying to save money by getting rid of the concrete and stuff, so.
I'm just telling you the call I got from the client.
That doesn't make any sense, I, I mean, you'd have to enclose the whole thing, and deer are gonna go around the fence, right over.
They're gonna jump in once it's twelve, well, ten feet.
Well, I think they, what I, I just did a quick Googles, I think they're like eight feet, is like a standard deer fence height, or seven and a half?
They'll jump over eight.
They'll jump over eight.
Really?
Oh, easily, yeah.
Um, so, I wanted to bring it up to the commission, I wanted to understand the thoughts or the concerns about that, understanding that it can't exceed six feet um, in the yard, if it, if it, so, we'd have to put it on the edge of the parking lot.
Well, we don't want it.
Well, it sounds like you'd have to go to wetlands first, so.
Okay. Got it.
Get the building done first.
Yeah. Um, what about the gates, is, is that something the commission would be okay with? Just like metal swing gates that, to keep cars from traveling towards the rear of the building?
Would it be on both sides?
It'd be on, it'd be on this side and this side.
I'd like to see what it looks like, but yeah, sounds okay.
I don't think that's a issue.
Okay, great. Those are the, those are the, the, so, Scott, I don't think you issued comments for this, I don't think you normally do, but obviously, Will, Will did provide some comments.
I provided comments. I provided comments, uh, and two sets, two sets of them. Uh, comments are, uh, suggesting that it's contingent on providing verification of approval or no use for product from the DEEP.
Which we did provide those emails, I don't know if you saw those in the package.
Well, uh, I didn't, uh, but I think I heard about something, but, uh, if, I guess if there's something. I'm just saying, there needs to be something to say there, that either a permit's been issued, or you don't need a permit. Quite frankly, I don't understand how you could have a holding tank with a joint in the middle of it. Like, to me, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's essentially a, a, a pump chamber tank.
Yeah, but it's got, what is it, bitumastic in the, in the middle of the.
Oh, it's, it's a concrete precast tank, there's, there's no joint in the middle, it's, it's.
Yeah, there was a joint.
No, there's a, there's a top and a bottom.
In the detail, there's a, there's two sections, there's a joint in the middle. And it's like, why do you put a joint in the middle?
They have a big line seam.
Yeah, if anything, you'd have a, a tank with a top.
That's what was, that's what was specified, and that's what was.
Okay, cause I could swear, I could swear I saw in the detail that it had a joint in the middle, and I, that's not.
I think you did.
Do we have a detail?
There was, there, we have a detail, cause we had, we had specified a specific pump, pump chamber tank from Connecticut Precast. And actually, we had to update the dimensions, but it didn't make actual specific one anymore. We did, we do have a detail, if it wasn't in the plans, we just wanted to provide that.
They do make a two-piece tank that is a top and a bottom.
That's what we specified.
But that has a midline, a mid-height joint.
And that's what I thought I saw.
Well, let me tell you something, you put that, that black seal, that bitumastic in there, and, I mean, you just, you can't pull that apart, I tried.
Wow.
You'll rip, you'll rip the concrete apart before that, that bitumen strip fails.
And, and if the, if DEEP is okay with it, then I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we, we went back and forth with DEEP, we provided them a list of chemicals, and, and they verified that nothing in here would meet the, uh.
There was an email attached to your.
Yes.
Well, if I understand the caveat about that, we had that, was it on this phone, or you took the notes on the plan, or was it a different phone?
Um, that was, I think we put the same notes, we're incorporating the same notes, cause we just did this for one fifty-four enterprise.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
One of them.
So we'll certainly incorporate the same notes.
But if I remember the DEEP aspect was, it was sort of like you didn't need a permit if you met certain criteria, but there was no way of anyone verifying that criteria.
Well, in, in this instance, we actually provided DEEP with a list of all the chemicals that will be stored here.
No, I get that, but part of it was, if you don't take it to a place that puts it into a septic system. You put it into a septic system somewhere, then you have to get a DEEP permit.
No, we couldn't put it into a septic system. Would, would.
I know, but if you did, you were supposed to get a permit, so the point is, it's, it's kind of a silly permit, non, non-permit, you know what I mean? It's based on you, good faith, doing what you're supposed to do. No one's checked. That was the craziness. But you did meet the DEEP, DEEP aspect.
Yes.
Well, I don't know what I was looking at, cause I don't see it on the plans.
We have a picture of it before it went into the.
Oh, maybe it's on this.
If we can, Scott, I can provide you the cut sheet. But it was, it was the Connecticut Precast two-piece with a top and the bottom, and it would have to have that, um.
Now, now, you can get, you know, I don't know if Connecticut Precast makes them, but like United does, you know, with a, it's a full tank with a, just a slab top.
Okay.
You know, so you don't have any joints below your roof.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
But I don't know if they make them in four thousand.
Yeah, that's a big tank.
Because then you start getting into a weight issue.
Oh, for, for, why wouldn't they use a plastic?
It's what's, what's available locally, and cost.
Plastic, they mold the whole thing, it has no joints. Lighter, it's easier to sew, you have to strap it down.
Sorry, Nick.
It's already in there.
Can you explain why it went in double in size, and why it moved to the front?
So, uh, yes, uh, the reason that it moved from a location standpoint is where they found rock during construction. So if we wanted to try to leave it back where it was, they were gonna have to hammer and, and take out more rock. So where we located it was actually outside of the limit of where they encountered rock as part of site construction, so that was part of it. The reason that it doubled in size is because as they looked at, as they got further into their operations, from like a building operation standpoint, basically, they, they wanted to design, design the, the building and the tank, so it would have duplicative containment from a hundred percent standpoint. So like, not only, so, so they have, um, this is the, the large tank farm, and it's actually built with a curb, so there's containment here. Right, and then, um, they may have, they're gonna have tanks through here, they have mobile tanks, but they just wanted to have it, um, overly large, so that as they, when they still do like washing of, uh, tanks and things like that, they can actually operate for an extended period of time without having to get it dumped out. But they expect, based on the four thousand gallon tank, I think every two weeks, they're gonna be pumping that out, just based on washing.
I've studied for language in the notes or narrative about washing of vehicles, and I don't understand what, there's a need to wash vehicles here for.
If it's a tanker coming in there, Will, you gotta wash the tank out in order to put different product in it. So that's probably what they're talking about. If they're coming in with tankers, say with product A, but now they're gonna reload that tank with product B, you gotta wash that stuff off.
Yeah, I don't think they do it that.
Yeah, I don't think they're intending to do that either, they're actually, they're actually incorporating some, some, um, plummets, they actually bring the tanker into the loading dock and actually connect it right to the building to fill up some of the tanks. Um, but I don't believe that they're actually then reusing that same truck to bring material out. I really think it's just for washing out, um, when they're, you know, they'll make a, they'll make a product using a tank, and then they, and then they have to rinse that out at the end of the night, and rinse out other things that they're using. That's what's gonna go into those, that, that, that floor drain system. Um, and they're actually, they're actually incorporating steam cleaning here, which they don't do in Milford. Um, but in Milford, they're on sewers, so that's, it's not the same issue, but because they can't do that because of the septic, they're incorporating steam cleaning and stuff, which is actually gonna even reduce it more, but they just wanted to, I think, I think Dwayne's looking kinda like for a belt and suspenders here, that just gives them the most amount of flexibility. I mean, from a, yeah, that's, yeah.
The, the other topic is, how do we get these things to come sooner? The tank has been known for over a year, as far as we understand from the contractor.
So.
And it's already in the ground.
Yeah, the, um, as you know, there was an extended delay in the processing of this construction project. So there was a, there was a, um.
There was a delay?
Huh?
Oh, you mean when you changed the, when you fired the, one guy and hired the other guy?
Yes.
Okay.
And then there was, there was, there was a, a number of things associated with that, which basically put everything on pause, including the processing of this application.
Okay.
Can I just review your changes in parking?
Um, we actually didn't change the parking at all, we just changed the parking calculation based on the changes in the floor plan.
Your total number of required spaces has not changed?
The number of required spaces actually went down a little bit.
Okay, and you reduced any of your parking?
We have not, we maintain the same number of parking spaces.
I also commented that in the front, they can consolidate their handicap file, and that could actually, additionally reducing parking, but you could also pick up another landscape island in the front.
Yeah, I mean, at, at this point, we're, we're, um.
Having pavement.
Yeah, I know, we're.
It's not that hard to throw in a curb around a parking lot.
Another landscaped island of the property, but. I think there's a lot of landscaping.
Well, a lot of pavement, yeah. End of.
Okay, so commissioners to kind of consolidate this, looking for adding a subsurface, subsurface floor drainage system with a four thousand gallon storage tank that's been moved to the front of the building, eliminating the flagpole, landscaping and planting modifications, some lighting revisions, some minor architectural modifications to the floor layout, adding an irrigation system, um, some minor building fit-out modifications that reduces their parking requirement, but they're not reducing the number of parking spaces. And they're asking to install, I'll call them security gates on the parking driveways between the front and back parking lots.
And the generator pad.
And a generator pad. That was added after this?
It was, yes.
And we are not. And we are not going to address the deer fence, because that would have to go to wetlands first anyway. So, who has questions?
The walks. I have, I mean, when we look at this, because ARB, and we approved them, we approved them, I mean, I could understand the flagpole and stuff, I mean, is the walks a big deal?
It, it's a, I think it's like a sixty-five thousand dollar item.
Stamping the walks, is that what you're...
Yeah, the stamped concrete component.
Stamped concrete?
Just brush finish, standard sidewalks.
That's the only concern I have. I mean, the other stuff I can, you know, with the fence and all that stuff, I'd walk as a...
No questions. Okay, I, I understand Leon's concern about the stamped concrete, but I, I personally think that stamped concrete, in the long run, looks worse, because it's a maintenance issue if you get, you know, snowplow hits it, if you get any chinks in the surface, you can't patch it sufficiently. A nice, fine room finish sidewalk, I think is nice and clean. Staff have any other comments?
Mike, I, oh, the comment was just that the current bond is adequate to cover any changes, and that the, in the wetland administrative permit was issued.
It was issued.
Yeah, it's administrative.
Okay. All right, Mr. Soli, no one else seems to have any other questions, so anything else?
We're excited to get this open. It's been a long time coming. It'll be done by, I think, November. It's a good-looking building.
It's got doors on it.
I know.
Especially the front.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I guess that, hmm? We're almost to it. That puts us back to item number sixteen, deliberations and determinations. Where do we go with this, Will? Do we, do we process this tonight? Do we wait for an approval draft?
No, you can process this tonight.
What does, what does everybody feel about this? Where do you wanna go with it?
I approve it.
I approve it.
All right, well, do we have a motion?
Move to approve permit amendment modification SCP two thousand fifteen dash fifteen A two, five hundred Pepper Street, second.
All right, discussion.
This one, he's already building the sidewalks, doesn't have any to front of it. I thought he was gonna kick off some, getting it off the front of the building, you know?
That's not, no, they're not asking for that here.
I think that's what he mentioned, didn't he mention that?
No. There's no changes to the facade of the building, right, Will?
Not that I'm worried.
Not that, not that they requested. So, Will, do you have any, any notes that should be added to...
Well, the ones I have are just the ones related to the housekeeping I had on my comment one. You have the items that you're approving, the, the swing gate, they're gonna have to give us a detail, obviously. I'm assuming it's a metal open gate, if that's what they're representing?
Yeah.
That's about it, I think.
The dumpster pad was not on their application, but it's on the plan.
The dumpster?
Isn't that, or the generator pad?
The generator, yeah. They added that, and they ditched in that in the file.
Okay. All right, well then, we have a motion, we have a second, we've had our discussion. Let's call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Wilk, yes. Ambrose, yes.
Porter, yes.
Riley, yes.
Nothing else we need to deliberate on, right? We need not. We already did our regulation review. I have no correspondence, I have nothing new to report. Anybody else have anything to report? Staff have anything to report?
Nope.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Nine fifty-nine.